Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Thursday, July 17, 2025. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Planning Board of Princeton for February 2025 through January 2026. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 8, 2025. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution was published in the January 17, 2025 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting also has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January 17, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon when the time comes at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. A countdown clock on your screen will help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Ms. Philip, will you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Mr. Bodikheimer?
Here.
Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mayor Frida?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Nuka?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Thumbs up.
From muted. Okay. And, um, Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, announcements. Um, Mr. Lesko, Justin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, uh, members of the board and members of the public. Just a quick announcement, um, you may have heard this already, but, um, our wonderful Planning Board Secretary, uh, Carrie Phillips is retiring at the end of this month, um, after 31 years with the municipality and the township before it. Um, I'm not gonna get too sappy here, uh, but I guess this is happy enough for me, but, um, I'll just say in the six years, six and a half years, um, that I've known Carrie, uh, she's shown time and time again how much she cares about this board, this town, and its residents. Um, so I would just like to thank her once again for her service to Princeton. Um, for board members, we sent out information for retirement luncheon to be held at 400 Witherspoon at the end of the month, um, and I hope you all can attend.
Here, here.
I will certainly be there, yes.
Absolutely.
In fact, a lot of us will. Um, I have noticed going to the building that Carrie's smile has gotten bigger and bigger, lighter and brighter, uh, over the past several weeks. And I, I know Carrie that you are gonna love retirement, but we're gonna make you come back at least once, uh, when we have a, um, a proper, uh, resolution, um, honoring and recognizing you, um, at a, uh, at an upcoming meeting.
Oh, thank you.
That's, that'll be after you've, you've had lots and lots of full nights of sleep and...
Much appreciated.
We're in the rearview mirror, except for that night. But thank you so much. You've been just, uh, just wonderful for the board. David?
Thank you. Yeah, sorry, didn't wanna rush things, but, um, I do have a report from the Site Plan Subcommittee, which last, met last week. Uh, we just reviewed an application that's actually before the board tonight for the, uh, IVN, and, uh, we did recommend that it be, uh, deemed a minor site plan.
Okay, great. Um, I think that's the only, um, committee report that we have. So let's move on to, um, the minutes. We have minutes from April 18th, um, that included some, um, some good edits, uh, offered up by David Cohen, and where those edits were, uh, the final version was sent around to the board, um, just a couple days ago, I think. Uh, any further, uh, questions or suggested edits to those minutes? And if not, would someone like to move them? Moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Owen O'Donnell. Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, next up, we have two resolutions. The first is for Stony Brook Regional Sewage Authority. This was a minor site plan with a conditional use at 290 River Road, file number P 2424-503 PM slash CO. Um, questions or comments on the resolution? And if there are none, would someone like to move it? Moved by David Cohen, seconded by...
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Capizoli, seconded by Julie Capizoli. Um, uh, Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, next up, we have, uh, a resolution for Louisa Clayton. This was a minor subdivision, lot line adjustment at 93 Mount Lucas Road and 82 Trigune Road, block 7006, lots eight and nine, file number P 2525-612 MS. Any comments or questions about this resolution? And if there are none, would someone like to move it?
May I move such? May I?
Thanks. Thanks, Jack Taylor, and there is a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Um, call the roll, please, Carrie?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks. Um, next up, we have, um, two applications, one of which is carried, but the first one, um, well, was carried from June 5th. Um, Jerry, could you speak to proper notice and jurisdiction?
For...
This is, I'm sorry, let me read it first. Sorry, sorry about that. This is for LDM Inc., uh, minor site plan with variance at 248 Nassau Street, block 3, 30.02, lot 89. This file number P 2525-594 PM.
Yeah, Madam Chair, proof publication service are in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lesko, you wanna start us off?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Jerry, could you swear in, Justin? And then I guess we should also swear in other, um, town professionals while we're at it.
Yep. Um, do you swear or firm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
Just please state for the record your last names.
Uh, Justin Lesko, L E S K O.
Derek.
Daniel. After you, Derek.
Derek Bridger, B R I D G E R.
Daniel Weisman, W E I S S M A N.
Great, thanks. Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and I believe this was mentioned already, but just, uh, to reiterate, the second application that's on here, the one over in the Jugtown area at 338 and 342 Nassau Street, will be carried to October 9th, uh, as it states on the agenda. Um, you're more than welcome to stay, but if, if you wanna, if you're here for that one, uh, that's not gonna be heard tonight. Um, the one that is going to be heard tonight, um, as was mentioned by the chair, is at 248 Nassau Street. Um, I'm going to start by pulling up, sharing my screen to pull up, um, the publicly accessible NJ Map Parcel Explorer from Roman University, and we could call this PB1. Jerry?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks. Uh, the subject property is located, uh, on Nassau Street between Chestnut Street and Pine Street, uh, here in the blue outline. It contains the IVN. Uh, to the west is a mixed-use building with a new restaurant on the first floor called The Chick Bomb. Uh, the board approved a site plan application for that restaurant in January 2024. Uh, to the east is another mixed-use building with a restaurant on the first floor, Tiger Noodles, um, and university educational research space above, and the board approved a conditional use application for that university use in June 2023. Uh, to the north of the subject property is a, a parking lot, uh, with parking for the building on the corner of Pine Street and Nassau Street, the one that includes, uh, Blue Point Grill, Nassau Street Seafood and Produce, and Small World Coffee's Nassau Street location. Um, that parking lot is accessed through a driveway actually on the IVN's lot, um, and I'll come back to that in a second. Finishing up the adjacent uses, uh, Jay's Cycles is, uh, the retail bicycle store is directly across Nassau Street. Um, zooming into the subject parcel, uh, and hopefully this becomes less blurry, um, the IVN is an eating and drinking establishment, which is the language that we use in our ordinance, um, and that is a permanent use in the NB zone that it is in. Uh, the IVN has operated in this building since the early 1970s. Uh, the building itself is actually an adaptively reused gas station built, I believe, in the 1930s. Uh, you could see, to some extent, um, if you got really good eyes, um, the driveway that I mentioned earlier, leading from Nassau Street to the parking lot in the rear, um, it also, uh, goes to the, uh, garage parking to the adjacent building to the east, if you remember that from, uh, the university's application, um, two years ago. Uh, in the rear of the IVN building, uh, there's a fenced-in patio that was the result of a, uh, 2010 approval by the board. The front portion of the site is really what we're here to talk about tonight. Um, 50 or so years ago, it's actually where the gas pumps would have been located. Um, following that, it became a six-car parking area for the IVN, uh, and minimum parking requirements in the NB zone for an eating and drinking establishment are based on the number of seats in the establishment. Um, there, the minimum requirement is at least one parking space for every five seats. Uh, so that 2010 approval I just mentioned of the rear patio added seats, and the board approved a variance to allow for five spaces where 15 were required. Um, variances were also granted to allow those spaces to be in the front and rear yard. They basically already existed there, uh, but they needed to ask for variance relief regardless. Um, in 2020, the parking area was converted to outdoor seating during the pandemic under the governor's executive order. Uh, the IVN received the required permits from the state and municipality and has operated outdoor seating in this area since then. Uh, the governor's order was set to expire last November, uh, and then the legislature signed a new law authorizing continued permanent use of outdoor dining. There are some requirements of the law, of that law, that the IVN cannot meet under their existing setup, which is why they're here today. Uh, most notably, under that law, they would need at least one ADA parking space. Um, they would also need to comply with zoning regulations. Uh, whereas you'll see this canopy tent that they've had up is located within the front yard setback, which would require a variance. They're asking for that tonight, as well as a, uh, parking variance. Um, I will let the applicant describe their application, you know, more in detail, um, but I'll note that they are asking for those variances tonight alongside site plan approval to operate essentially as they've operated for the past five years, uh, you know, with picnic tables in the tent in that former parking area. Um, a few other notes, uh, the subject property is not located in any locally designated historic districts, uh, though the historic element of the Princeton Master Plan does mention the Tree Streets area as one to study for potential local designation. The King's Highway Historic District on the state and national registers runs from Lawrenceville along 206 to Kingston on Route 27 through Princeton from border to border, uh, and along the subject property. This site is well-served by public transit. Uh, NJ Transit 606 bus line runs in front of the property up to the Princeton Shopping Center. Um, the free Princeton Muni bus runs a similar route. The Coach USA bus from Palmer Square runs on Route 27 to New Brunswick, uh, on its way to the Port Authority in Manhattan. Uh, Princeton University's Tiger Transit, which is free and open to all, uh, and also electric, um, stops about two blocks from this site on Charlton Street, both on its weekday and night slash weekend schedules. Uh, there is metered parking on Nassau Street, and several streets in the area include metered or, uh, un-metered street parking. And lastly, as you heard earlier from Councilman Cohen, uh, the Site Plan Committee met, um, last week and classified this application as minor. Um, so I, I wrote a report, uh, dated July 11th. Um, the general comments from my report are that the IVN has had outdoor dining for five years now, and it seems to function well. Uh, formalizing the change would complete what, you know, it's kind of unintentionally a 50-year effort to adaptively reuse a gas station into a thriving locally-owned business and community amenity. Um, and when I say community amenity, I'm really referring to, uh, kind of the term third places, uh, which are recommended in the Princeton Master Plan, and these are places outside of the home and the workplace, uh, that allow for socialization and interaction, uh, and they're open to all. Um, so basically, they're informal places where community can form and come together, and you can certainly see this happen in the outdoor area of the IVN, uh, whether it's Tuesday night trivia or when nonprofits hold events out there. Um, you know, it's, it's a, it's slightly different than being within the four walls of a bar, I would say. Um, the mobility element of the Princeton Master Plan includes goals to encourage a shift in transportation from single occupancy vehicle travel to other options like biking, walking, and ride share. Um, and really, a large question in this application is whether this land in front of the IVN should be used for five or six cars, or maybe that ADA space, um, that they would need under the, the new legislation, or whether it should be outdoor dining as it has functioned. Um, I noted, as did my colleagues and the applicant, that a curb cut, uh, roughly right here would be eliminated if the application is approved. Um, this would increase, uh, safety for both people on foot on the sidewalk, um, and people pulling into or out of these other two driveways, the one I mentioned before, and one over by, uh, uh, that new restaurant. Um, it's three narrow driveways within about, I think, 115 feet, all three of them. Um, eliminating the curb cut would also allow for additional spaces to be added to the street, uh, and the applicant should work with the town, um, to, to figure out what's going to go there, whether it'll be an ADA accessible space, whether it'll be a loading zone for deliveries during the day and ride share at night, as we've been putting in throughout the town, um, or whether it'll just be possibly two parking spaces. Um, another goal of the mobility element is to identify locations where ride share pickup and drop-off could be, locations could be established. Uh, an additional note I, I had is that the space required for the minimum parking, uh, this is kind of a theoretical exercise, but, um, 42 spaces would be required for this use, um, and that's actually, the space needed for 42 spaces would be larger than the whole parcel. Uh, so, uh, and additionally, the variances that were granted in 2010 for front and side yard parking would go away, or would no longer be needed. And lastly, the applicant has stated that they want to keep the vinyl canopy tent, uh, though they've mentioned, uh, an optional, more permanent wooden structure, um, the board may want to consider a time period to replace the tent, um, or just at least some certainty on, on what exactly they're looking to do. Uh, so, Madam Chair, those are all the comments I have at this time, uh, and I know Mr. Bridger and Mr. Weisman are here with their report as well.
Um, thanks, Justin. Uh, Dan Weisman, uh, and Derek, do you have anything urgent to flag for the board, um, before we hear from the applicant? Go ahead, Dan, yeah.
Yeah, if I may, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, everyone. Um, just a, a couple of quick pointers, uh, staff comments that are in the report. Um, so the applicant is proposing 18, uh, 30-inch-tall concrete planters along the front and side lot lines. Those planters are proposed to contain skiploral hedges with a maximum height of 36 inches along Nassau Street and 60 inches along the driveway entrance. Uh, staff is requesting that these hedges be revised and the planters be revised to only go to a maximum height of, of 15 feet, um, oh, sorry, 30 inches, 15 feet setback from the public right-of-way, and then 15 feet setback from the driveway to create a site triangle to improve pedestrian visibility across the sidewalk and vehicles entering and exiting that driveway. Um, so we would ask to have a revised plan indicating as such. Um...
So, quick, uh, clarification about that. Is that along the entire, uh, frontage and along the driveway, or just dirt, just where the site triangle is that we're talking about? With the lower, with the 30-inch limit?
My recommendation would be 15 feet site triangles, it would be 15 feet at, at a minimum, um, if the applicant wanted to go only a 30-inch-high, uh, row along the entire right-of-way line, uh, staff would have no objection to that. Um, but the reasoning behind the, the 15-foot site triangle is that the building setback is 15 feet. Um, so I think that would be a reasonable accommodation to, to meet that site triangle requirement.
Okay, good.
So, Dan, are you suggesting that staff review what's going to be planted in the planters to, uh, so we have a comfort level, and in fact, it's, it's not gonna be taller than 30 inches?
Yes, sir, and if a note could be added to the plan that, uh, it wouldn't grow to taller than 30 inches, that would be a, a site plan maintenance, uh, aspect.
Thank you.
Um, just one comment regarding the driveway connections to public streets. Um, Justin had mentioned that the, the driveway, if reconstructed, uh, to just a curb, um, public right-of-way guidelines, uh, PROAG, uh, would require if, if there are parking spaces created in the right-of-way, that one of those spaces would have to be ADA compliant. Um, so there would have to be some work to do some slight widening of the roadway to make that space ADA compliant and a, and a slight narrowing of the sidewalk there. There is substantial space, uh, it does meet, uh, right-of-way PROAG guidelines. Um, just wanted to make the board aware that that would be the requirement if those spaces were determined to be parking. Um, the DOT does permit parking in this area, it's a, it's a parking zone. Um, the parking zones on, on DOT regulations don't get into, um, driveway detail, uh, but they do say, okay, from point A to point B, um, measured from intersection to intersection, or a certain amount of feet from intersection to a point, um, can either be a loading zone, a parking zone, or a no parking zone. So this portion is a, um, limited parking zone, so converting them to parking would be consistent with the DOT recommendations. If it were to go to a loading zone, DOT would have to approve that.
Hmm. But Dan, one of those two spaces would have to be ADA, you say?
Correct.
Okay. Well, would have to be, or...
Public right-of-way guidelines would require one of the spaces to be ADA.
Okay.
There are some comments in the report regarding, um, noise regulations, um, the outdoor dining legislation, which is not what we're here for tonight, um, but they do provide guidance for, um, limiting days and hours of outdoor service of, of food and beverages if, uh, an applicant came on, in, under that legislation, um, which basically limits it from 10:00 PM to 11:00 AM Sundays through Wednesdays, and 12:00 AM to 11:00 AM Thursdays through Saturdays. Um, there is a provision that those can be more restrictive if the ordinance, um, or hours of operation for, uh, places serving alcoholic beverages. Um, the Princeton ordinance, it isn't, but since we are here for a site plan, um, the board should contemplate the use of this outdoor space, um, either as it relates to, to noise constraints, or, um, as it could relate to that outdoor dining legislation to be consistent with other outdoor dining. Um, other than that, there's, there's some general comments in the staff report. Um, there is one additional request that, uh, I failed to put in the report, um, but, uh, I would just request that, uh, if this application is approved, the applicant, uh, just provide a, a plan indicating accessible routes, uh, ADA accessible routes within the site, um, since it is an alteration from what was a parking lot to, uh, an outdoor dining space. Um, we just wanna have something that, that verifies that, uh, accessibility is provided.
Great, okay. Um, so that does it for both of you. Anything to add, Mr. Bridger?
At this time, thank you, Madam Chair.
But Dan, just clarifying my own mind, for the accessible routes there from where the parking, uh, in the, in the neighboring lots and on the street?
It would be that, and then it would be within the, the outdoor dining, uh, area.
Within, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, Mr. Kennedy, Ryan Kennedy, uh, here on behalf of, of the applicant tonight?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee for the IVN here this evening. I wanna thank, uh, board, um, and all your professionals for your help with this. This application goes back quite a bit, uh, not necessarily in filing, but with working with the, the town. Um, as you've heard from your planner and will hear from us this evening, um, this is a story of a local restaurant bar, um, who, uh, throughout COVID has been using this unique outdoor space, uh, we think successfully, uh, for the community and as a business in a way that much better use of land than the five parking spaces that were, um, previously approved, uh, in the 2010 site plan. Uh, and as part of our request tonight, um, we think there's many benefits. One, um, some, uh, minor improvements to what's already working well, um, uh, better, uh, more, um, permanent feeling, uh, planters, uh, the option that we'll hear about, um, uh, and we think the, you know, your planner's suggestion of, uh, perhaps in two years to pull the trigger, um, on, on a wood structure, um, to replace the, uh, uh, tent that's been used for the past five years, um, the addition, um, of two likely on-street parking spaces that we will work with the municipality towards, um, as well as, uh, numerous other benefits of improving, uh, the site here. Um, when we started this, um, there had been, every year, unfortunately, uh, this tension for restaurants about whether the state would in, extend the outdoor dining rules, um, or let them lapse, and we had several false starts to prepare ourselves to, to go in and, and request as a site plan, uh, permanent, um, approval for these, um, improvements as we are here tonight. As Mr. Lesko said, um, the current proposal is, is very close, uh, to what would be essentially allowed permanently without, um, coming here. However, the, uh, one, uh, ADA parking space would be required on-site in order to comply with the ongoing, uh, as-of-right COVID extended rules, and here, um, we believe that a better use of this property, better use of this land, uh, is, is for people rather than one car. Um, and as part of that, by closing off, again, as your planner suggested, and you'll hear from our team, uh, by closing off and working with the town to close off that curb cut, um, will actually gain back two spaces. And I'll be honest, I didn't know till I heard, uh, from Mr. Weisman tonight that, that the state's requirements, uh, might actually require one of them to be an ADA space, um, uh, which ends up being almost a net gain from what we would have done otherwise, in a way that would have used up a lot of paintment, um, and, and been a, um, and I'm not gonna say eyesore, but, uh, uh, not as good of a use of the, the land i- in front of this building here on Nassau Street, uh, and in an area where there are numerous curb cuts, would have continued the potential confusion and pedestrian, uh, concern, um, with, uh, having interference or, or breaking up that streetscape. And by removing that curb cut, uh, permanently, um, and working with the town to do that, uh, we create a more walkable streetscape, and as we found, and you'll hear, uh, over the past couple years, um, this use and site has really found its, its home a- as a walkable place, uh, in the community, uh, that is used, and, and, uh, while we are seeking a parking variance, it is one where the past five years have shown, uh, no negative impact, um, uh, from the exerting, the existing use, which we are essentially asking, uh, to continue here tonight. So we'll have two witnesses. Um, we've got Richie Bryan, uh, one of the owners from the IVN, as well as Brian Perry, um, who's, uh, who's, who's firm is our civil engineers, and also did a, a bit of a, a parking letter to help us understand the, uh, the variance that's needed for parking here tonight. So, uh, if it's...
Ryan, Ryan, before we, I swear to the man, just one of the clarification on the tent being converted to a wooden structure. It, it sounded like you would definitely do that within the two-year period.
We, uh, wasn't our initial thinking, but that was, um, a... We, wasn't our initial thinking, but that was a suggestion from Mr. Lesko's memo. And we think that's a good one. We think that within two years is appropriate time to decide, finalize it and frankly, be more comfortable with the cost of those things, hopefully by the end of that two years than than right now.
Okay, great. And then Mr. Ryan and Mr. Perry, if you both can raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
Would you each state your full name and spell your last name?
Richard Ryan, R Y A N.
Brian Perry, P E R R Y.
Um, before either of you speak, Mr. Cohen has a question or comment?
Yeah, since I'm not hearing that there's a planner, a professional planner giving testimony, I'm just curious, Ryan, who's going to address the planning proofs for the variances that are being requested?
Our engineer will tonight, we have a testimony on the on the on the variances that we'll hear later.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
So with that, Mr. Rolla, if it's all right, we have one set of ten slides. I'd like to have that marked as our one exhibit here this evening. And if it's right to share the screen?
Yeah, and that'll be A1.
Thank you so much.
Share away.
Believe that was successfully done. So Richie, if you could, before we start, just introduce yourself. Explain your connection, you know, to to the IVN.
So I am currently the owner. The business has been in my family since nineteen sixty-six. And we've been at this location, as you said earlier, since nineteen seventy-five. Used to be a gas station. And we're just, I mean, when COVID came, it was awful for everyone, as we all know. But there's one positive that actually came out of it, this outdoor seating that we were forced to do at the time. And now it seems to have, and people seem to be enjoying it, and we'd just like to make it permanent.
Well, thank you, Richie. I'm going to move to slide two, just to kind of orient the board, though Mr. Lesko did this to an extent here, that blue arrow points to where the inn is? That was a question, just if you confirm that we're pointing to the property there?
Is that to me?
Yeah, it is, yes.
Yes, that's us.
All right, thank you. I'm going to move to slide three. Again, I think a similar photo was shown by Mr. Lesko, but that blue box, Richie, that that shows where the the inn is?
That's us. Pardon me if I'm squinting, I am the one in a million people that had the Lasik surgery go bad.
Oh, no.
I apologize. That's why I'm over here like, oh.
Well, just maybe we could take the the board through a little bit of the history. You know, up on the top right here, and I'll remind you, you know, so you don't have to squint as much on slide four. There's a photo that we got from you of the site when it was a gas station, is that part of the history?
That's correct. So, yeah, so my uncle was a bartender at the original IVN, which was which was located at what is currently Small World called. And the owner took a liking to him of some sort and offered him to buy the business at that time. And in nineteen seventy-three, he bought the business and he operated out of what was what is Small World. And he did well. And in nineteen seventy-three, what was flying a gas station became for sale. And he was able, through the pooling of our family's money, which wasn't much at the time, and I don't think it'd be possible today, I know it would be possible today, but they were able to acquire the gas station. And they did. And in January of seventy-five, they opened what you know today as the IVN. And here we are.
Mr. Ryan, was the Small World location the one on Nassau Street, I assume?
Nassau, yes.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead. Sorry to interrupt.
Not at all.
And Richie, sorry, on the left side, there's the the prior site plan. So in twenty-ten, you had gotten approval to have those five spaces in the front, which required a front yard setback and a parking variance for the number of spaces that were really necessary for the site. But could you just talk a little bit about how those were actually used? And did they function? You know, what was it, customers parking there? What really happened?
Honestly, it was staff. It was staff and maybe a per or two, depending on the time of day. But with five spots, you have, you know, you have, you know, two, there's a two doorman and a manager. I mean, five spots wasn't really doing much for us. I mean, it was there, but I always wondered why we got, I mean, yeah, that's basically it. We were the one with a setback, and it was great, and it is great. But as far as use for parking, it was a staff park.
And then come twenty-twenty, unfortunately, that's when, under the EO one fifty, you started your initially only operations probably outside, but then your your COVID operations.
Correct.
Now, I'm going to move to slide five here. And this has got aerial photos from ones from April twenty-nineteen, the others from February twenty-twenty-four. Maybe we could just talk through and start kind of contrasting, you know, what things looked like before and how things have been operating since COVID. So, you know, just with reference to the one on the right, you know, talk about what and the couple of things that we're going to want to get at, you know, your hours operations, how it's functioned. And just general use of this front here.
So to the left, April twenty-nineteen, that parking. As you see, there's two cars. I think there was space for another three. And that was that. And that's how we were. And then through COVID, we were, I would have even thought of applying for something like this prior to COVID, but we were forced to go outside because of the pandemic. And it evolved into this. At the time, it was those, I remember eight to a pod, we had the green turf like golfed. And it was eight to a pod, it had to be eight feet apart, and there was six pods, and everybody was using sanitizer. And now to this, which I think has been a very positive, I know for us and I hope for the community as well.
Now, you talk a bit about your hours of operation and number of employees that you've got?
We open at eleven a.m., Monday through Saturday. Sunday, we open at noon. Monday through Wednesday, we close at, Monday, Tuesday, we close at twelve-thirty. Wednesday through Saturday at two and Sunday at noon.
And employees that you've got?
We have typically two bartenders, two door staff and a manager.
Okay. Now, there's no changes to lighting proposed, but can you just talk a little bit about what lights have been in place, you know, at the front door and in the front of the site?
Yes, we have the existing lights, you know, the one at the front door and the window that says IVN stained glass. But in addition, we just added some rope lighting, the call those bulbs, but they're like those party bulbs you see in people's backyards that we kind of roped over. The, you see the picnic side on that side, and we had some string lighting underneath the tent as well.
Excellent. I'm going to move on to slide six. So these are fairly recent photos, perhaps taken by one of your professionals while we were meeting at the site. I want to talk a little bit about, again, the use and what we're looking at here in the current current, I'll just say, now post-COVID outdoor dining scenario.
So basically, on the right, you see a tent, twenty by twenty, and it holds, I think, eight picnic tables, ten picnic tables. And on the left, it's open with umbrellas for the picnic tables. If needed, there's another ten tables. So we've evolved into that.
And as far as service goes, if someone were to be using this space, they would go inside and purchase a drink at the bar at the, at a, you know, from a bartender. Do you talk a little bit how that works? And then, security is not the right word, but ID checking and things like that, how that works at the site?
Oh, yeah. If someone wants to get a drink, they go in the front door, they order from the bartender inside the building, and they bring it out to us. Very simple. As far as security, there is after nine o'clock at night, always one person at the gate, which on the right picture, if you look past the flowers, just to the right before, yeah, right in there, there's an the only opening, and there's always a doorman or woman and or manager checking IDs to make sure that it's above twenty-one.
Now, and the limited situations where you've got, you know, live music or music outdoors, you talk about when when that happens and what your practice has been during COVID for that?
For outdoor music, I can only think of one band, Great Road West, God bless them. And they play outside where the the hedges and the umbrella side. And they'll play maybe from one to four. And it's full of great music that people seem to enjoy, never, never really at night. I'm sorry. So, yeah.
Last, I'm going to go back a slide to slide five. We just talked about, again, there's no proposed changes here, but what the arrangement is for trash for your for the for the site?
We have two dumpsters out back, one for recycling and one for trash, both of which are picked up three times weekly. So any trash that's out front or in the building is taken out the back door to the dumpsters and discarded and picked up three times a week.
Excellent. Moving back to slide six. I'm going to move ahead one more to slide seven. And before we get to our engineering testimony, I want to talk a little bit about the, I guess, at the bottom here, there's the picture of what I think we're proposing and within the first two years to replace the more temporary feeling canopy tent with a more permanent structure. You talk a little bit about your thinking of that and what your preference would be, should the board be amicable to allowing that in the future?
Excuse me, I'm great with, I love the look of this specific, I don't know if it's a pergola or gazebo, what you call it, but I like it. It's very expensive. And I, instead of purchasing it from a manufacturer, I was wondering if we could find potentially some sort of a carpenter or builder that could build it for less money than it's retailing for on the site that I found.
But ultimately, we could provide the specifications of what it would look like, essentially like this. But if you were to have it stick built by a local contractor, that it would essentially match this with the roofing and timber materials and number of posts?
That's correct.
Okay. Think we just make, give me one moment just to go through the memo here. I'll just also, if you could confirm, you have your ABC licensing in a place, in place, including for the outdoor extended space?
Correct.
With that, Madam Chair, if your board or members or professionals, I'm happy to have the applicant available for questions at this time.
Okay, any any board members have questions? Mr. O'Donnell, Owen O'Donnell?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of questions. Is there, if this should go through and with the outdoor dining and would there be additional waitstaff, do you think? Or would the the practice of going into the bar to get your drinks or to order your food remain?
Well, actually, I left that out. We leased the kitchen out to Saturn Pizza. So we had a kitchen and they have two servers on most nights of the week that do go table to table. So really, you only go inside for the beverage.
Okay, and that would remain, you wouldn't have waitstaff outside taking orders from people?
For drinks, no, but for food, yes.
Right, okay, thank you. And regarding the wooden canopy, would that essentially replace the vinyl tent that is there now, or would it be a larger structure?
Same size, twenty by twenty.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Owen. Palavenuka? And then Mr. Cohen. Sorry, I couldn't. Okay.
I couldn't unmute. So thank you for presenting the plan. You know, I really think that the outdoor area has been such a benefit to the community at the IVN. And I really like the idea of installing the planters and the laurel hedge. I just had one question, which is why that you placed the tent on the driveway side rather than the wall side? And I'm wondering if that affects visibility at all?
Never really thought of it, but looking at it, I think I tried to mimic the A-frame of the building.
Okay, I guess my concern would be if visibility could be an issue with the driveway in the future, would a permanent structure affect visibility at all? I don't know if staff have considered that or if there's any assessment of whether the current tent placement affects visibility?
If you're asking me, I don't, I don't think so. The height portion of the tent would be a problem. If anything, it would be the hedges, which I think they discussed earlier, lower on that corner of the of the plant. That first, like where the driveway is.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
Okay, I think that, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good questions. David Cohen?
Yeah, I apologize for being nitpicky, but I believe your testimony was eight or ten tables under the tent and eight or ten tables in the uncovered area when you were discussing seating. This plan shows six tables under the tent and I believe fourteen in the open area. I'm guessing that this plan is similar to what's there currently, and I just want to give you an opportunity to correct your testimony.
Yes, so six and fourteen as opposed to ten and ten. You're correct.
All right, thanks, David. Mr. Weissman?
Thank you. The waste storage area located towards the rear of the the building. My understanding based off of the site plan is that the building is actually on the lot line. So I'm just wondering if you have an agreement with the neighboring lot for the storage of those waste containers?
Yes.
Okay. That was all. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from board members or staff for Mr. Ryan? Okay, if not, Mr. Kennedy, you have, I'm furiously looking across my screen and.
Brian, apologies that I've taken it all up, it's hard to find.
Mr. Perry is next up, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So we'll need to qualify him?
Brian, if you could, I know you've testified before this board many times, but if you could, just give the board a brief benefit of your credentials and firm and your expertise here. So have you accepted as an expert here this evening?
Sure, thank you. Good evening. My name is Brian Perry. I am the Managing Director of New Jersey Operations for VHB. I'm also the Civil Engineer of Record for this application. I've got twenty-five years of engineering experience, bachelor's degree of civil engineering, master's degree, water resources, environmental engineering, New Jersey licensed professional engineer and certified municipal engineer. And again, as Mr. Kennedy mentioned, I've appeared before this board on several occasions, as well as the other adjacent municipalities and other municipalities throughout New Jersey.
Thank you. We accept your qualifications. You know, Mr. Cohen asked earlier about, and Mr. Kennedy responded that you would be speaking to the planning proofs as well? Is that correct? I mean, I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I just want to know whether or not, if you're testifying as to planning proofs, whether I guess this is really a question. this is really a question for Mr. Muller or for Mr. Lesko, do we do we require um a a planning um license of some kind for for individuals?
No.
In testifying to planning issues, okay? All right.
We do not.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Perry, we accept your qualifications, go right ahead.
Right, um. But Brian, if you could just start with, you know, your your um uh, how you came into this project, and while we have um slide seven up here, we can start going through the uh proposed improvements and the uh the site plan.
Sure, sure. Um, so, yeah, we were asked to formalize kind of the outdoor seating area that that we've heard, um, so since night, since twenty twenty, um, as we've heard prior testimony here, is the front parking area has been used for outdoor dining under a temporary state authorization, so that included the installation of picnic tables, a twenty by twenty uh vinyl canopy tent, which is there now, and a uh serving station, serving uh station structure. Um, and that use is continued under the public law, as you've heard, which allowed for permanent dining, outdoor dining through annual ABC permits. Uh, the current application seeks to formalize uh this outdoor dining use, um. And so what I'm gonna call the proposed improvements, which are there now, uh, they include maintaining the twenty by twenty canopy as existing vinyl tent in the near term, and then eventually a a a future wood frame structure. Um, it was discussed and is shown on the image on the screen or similar to, um, as you heard from Mr. Ryan, uh, along with twenty picnic tables, uh, four high-top tables and a server station. Um, that outdoor area that you're looking at on the screen here uh will be enclosed with eighteen concrete planter boxes, um, planted with skip laurel hedges to replace uh, and and that that barrier, that perimeter will um replace existing wooden fence that's there now. Uh, the hedges, uh, as was discussed earlier by the engineer, will be maintained at a thirty-inch height within fifteen feet of the intersection of the sidewalk and the access driveway. Um, that's for visibility for for um vehicles coming out of the driveway or coming into the driveway, uh, for pedestrians walking on the sidewalk. Um, so again, that'll be maintained at that height, um, within fifteen feet of the intersection of the sidewalk and the access driveway. Um, and and the plans will be revised uh to reflect same. Um, there'll also be a uh a four to six-foot wide opening between two of the planter boxes um along Nassau Street to allow for pedestrian access from the sidewalk into the outdoor seating area. You can see it uh on the graphic on the screen, it was also the the excerpt from the site plan, it's right at the center um of the uh of the array of planter boxes along Nassau Street. Um. In addition, uh, we'll be adding a uh bike rack, a black bike rack accommodating ten bicycles um along the sidewalk, uh, which exceeds the zoning requirement uh for three spaces for this uh application for the the square footage here. So, yeah, under the base, the square footage, three bicycle parking or bicycle, bike rack spaces are required, and we're providing ten. Um. The front outdoor seating will yield an additional one hundred twenty-eight seats uh for a total establishment seating capacity of two hundred and ten seats, which typically would require forty-two parking spaces at one space per five seats. Um, and again, under this application, we're uh looking to eliminate um that front parking, eliminate the parking on the site currently. Um. From a zoning perspective, uh, we're requesting variances for the front yard setback of the canopy structure at three feet versus the fifteen feet required and for the elimination of the onsite parking. There's also an existing variance uh for the rear yard building setback, which is zero, and and that remains unchanged. All other zoning and bulk standards um are met. Uh, regarding the parking.
All right, just just to just to know for the record, we, uh, uh, while you were talking, I just moved to slide eight that shows where those.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry about that, I should have, I should have had you advance. Uh, yeah, so here's the, this is noting the uh two hundred and ten seats that I referenced, I just mentioned. Um, and then, as I was mentioning, regarding the parking, I prepared a memo um in support of the application summarizing that the combination of on-street parking, bicycle accommodations, and pedestrian access uh supports the continued elimination of onsite parking. Um, the IVN has operated successfully in this configuration for the past five years, which we um heard about or discussed, and similar, and it's operating similar to other established eateries um in the downtown area that rely on publicly available parking, as they also do not have dedicated parking lot. Um, I would also add importantly, from a stormwater perspective, there's no increased impervious surface with this application, and the conversion of the parking area, um, a motor vehicle surface to outdoor seating reduces the potential for pollutant-laden stor- stormwater runoff, so another positive benefit with that, um, in addition to the, you know, the uh planter boxes will be added. Um, there's no land disturbance associated with this project that would trigger any other outside um agency land use approvals. Um, and then finally, should this application be approved, uh, it was discussed, you know, mentioned by the engineer, we understand that we would need to coordinate with the NJDOT to close the existing depressed curb along Nassau Street and install a full face curb and the bike rack within the state right-of-way. Um, that would, that'll generally involve obtaining a letter of no interest for closing down that um uh, existing uh depressed curb or access point and a highway occupancy permit. Um. And I can, I can speak a little bit more detail to the uh the variances, um, if you'd like.
Yeah, if you could, just before we do that, and with apology, I I do, I'm sure I do see Mr. Cohen's hand up, I I didn't want to let it linger too long.
Go ahead, David, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, in terms of your parking calculation, I know that uh, I think in our staff report, it talks about, you know, the state regulations which allow this outdoor seating and you know, that they're the only real parking requirement, onsite parking requirement is the one handicapped. Uh, so I I'm questioning why you're discussing the forty-two spaces that would be required under our local ordinances if those are over, if that ordinance is overridden by the state uh statute, and I just think for the record, it sounds a lot better if we're giving you a variance for one parking space than for forty-two.
Well, agreed.
Uh, 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 with 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 much agreement, I will join in there. Um, our understanding, though, is just out of an abundance of caution from from the proof perspective, is that because this is not technically an as-of-right application or even just use under the now permanent outdoor dining rules, that because we don't hit almost, I'll use the analogy of a conditional use, be- uh, without it being a use variance or leading this board, but because we don't hit those conditions, we then look at, while we can very, I don't mean to say easily, but understand the requirements, what we could do, and we talked a little about, well, could we squeeze an ADA space here and just comply, and we thought that this design made more sense, particularly since we actually get two spaces out of it instead of the the one and then the awkward pedestrian interchange, but we, I'll just say, from a, from our legal perspective, a- a- agree with you, um, but wanted to show under technically the variance we believe we need is from the town's ordinance, because unless we meet all the conditions of outdoor dining, this part is not necessarily superseded by this state provision. If it was, we would, you know, happily not be here. And it was honestly a a lot of thinking about whether we should just try to redesign the site in a less positive way and and not come back and go through the expense of it, or or really go with what has been working and what we thought was the best use of the property, and that's, that's why we're here, and and again, full agreement that um, particularly with the prior variances that were granted, you know, we're really talking about the five spaces that was kind of down space, but if you do add up the seats, technically, that is the number, and we just want to make sure that we were full in explaining with the the relief that might be needed.
Understood, yeah, got it. Thank you, Brian. And now I would like Brian to address the variances. Thanks.
Sure. So, on the subject of the um um the uh, the the parking, um. The, from a positive criteria perspective, you know, the benefits of that deviation, um, uh, to promote uh the outdoor dining uh area, that outdoor dining area enhances the streetscape that supports the local businesses, um, promotes the walkability. Um. So from a sustained, uh, so which substantially outweighs any of the detriments, um, I would say it proposes, uh, the proposal advances one or more uh purposes um of zoning, um, such as promoting the general wel- welfare, public encouraging the appropriate use of the land and um creating a desirable visual environment.
Um, we're talking about a C-two, is that?
C-two, yes.
Okay, correct.
And then, you know, under, from a negative criteria perspective, I would say the variance of um in eliminate the park will not cause substantial detriment to public good. In other words, you know, surrounding properties won't be negative negatively impacted by the reduced parking. Um, it won't substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance or the master plan as well. And, um, you know, this is supported by uh, the shared parking arrangements, um, that with adjacent and surrounding establishments, um, the fact that the area is walkable and served by public transit, which we heard earlier, and also the seasonal and kind of temporary nature uh from a seasonal perspective of the outdoor seating. Um, in other words, it's not necessarily um, maybe at full capacity all year round, but uh on the, on the elimination of the parking, those are uh, I would say the proofs.
Now, Brian, would you also speak to the, um, and it's, this is an interesting one here, the the front yard setback variance, because this this site, and I I I'll agree with you that the C-two is is appropriate um analysis for the front yard setback variance as well, but um, and if it's helpful for me to go back to a slide with streetscape, but this this site is unique in how far recessed it is, and while we are going closer, it actually, uh, um, these improvements, while also not building um are further back, uh, perhaps recessed than the rest of the the neighborhood in most cases.
Uh, yeah, so for the subject of the tent, um. I would say, I mean, it similarly, I mean, it supports the uh um, economic vitality, enhancing public enjoyment. Um, I guess some of those those categories, those those areas, you know, in a, from the category of a C-two benefiting benefiting and uh the benefits outweighing the detriments. Um. I would say there is kind of an irregular shape to the property from a standpoint of there's not a a lot of place to put it. If you put it too close to the building, you've got uh other issues with perhaps drainage up against the building, um, things like that, topography getting in the way. Um, we talked about the um visual um aspect as far as visibility, um, I think because it's an open um canopy, whether it be the the temporary one that's or the um vinyl one that's there now or a future one, um, there are no um impacts from a visual standpoint.
Um, Mr. Perry, is is it also fair to say, just from a balancing of positives and negatives, that by um replacing what was approved as a various condition of front yard parking with um uh structures that could be used, it actually restores a um and removes a non-conforming, ad- admit, uh, albeit one that was approved by uh the board as a variance in the site plan, but removes that non-conforming front yard parking condition while actually gaining more parking than would otherwise be allowed as of right with the one space?
Yes, in other words, yes, the um, um which look, the um uh, exception, yes, for allowing parking there, th- this outweighs that, correct. This this exception outweighs the exception for parking in the front of the building, correct?
Um, and as we continue, I'm gonna, I'll move to the the next slide, but um, perhaps this would have been a good one to have up while we were talking about the parking, but uh, this shows essentially that I'll just say, kind of penned in hypothetically, the spaces that the applicant will work with municipality on restoring uh potentially as as usable in in some way um uh for the community, uh, rather than where the curb cut is now.
Uh, I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part?
This this visual shows where um potentially two compliant on-street parking spaces would be, uh, rather than the curb cut or the the one that we would be required to have.
Yes, yeah. Absolutely.
Um. Um, Paula Vinuka, uh, has a question?
Hi, uh, so I do have a question. This is, uh, kind of going back to the the hedges and the visibility again. Um, so I I just saw in the staff memo that the planters are supposed to be thirty inches high, and then the the shrubs planted in there will be another thirty to thirty-six inches high. So, is, does that imply that the the barrier there will be sixty to sixty-six inches high?
So, within the zone of the um, the the site triangle that was described by Mr. Weissman, the fifteen foot within, pretty much where the arrows pointing, fifteen foot in either direction where that arrow is pointing would be limited to thirty-inch height. Everywhere else, um.
So, so when you say, is, so is that thirty-inch absolute, or is that thirty for the hedge plus thirty for the planter?
Thir- thirty-inch, uh, I believe that would be absolute for visibility, for vehicular visibility, yes.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Uh, another quick note about the the planters, you've um suggested um skip laurel or cherry laurel, um, th- those are very rapidly growing, uh, and they tend to get really tall, uh, and they are non-native, so you might think of, you know, replacing or substituting um inkberry, uh, Ilex calabra, they make uh uh, sort of short versions of those, and uh, it's a native shrub. Mr. Cohen?
Uh, I just had a question about the bike parking. I believe that's shown in the public right-of-way rather than on the applicant's property, and I'm just I just want to make sure that that doesn't require any kind of relief. Uh, I'm sure we're grateful to have it, um, but I I don't know whether our ordinance requires it to, you know, any special permission to put it in the public right-of-way?
I could speak to that. Uh, the ordinance does uh allow uh bicycle parking, short-term bicycle parking, to be placed in the right-of-way uh, subject to the the owner of the right-of-way approval. Uh, but that would only apply to the short-term parking, which which is required uh for this application.
Thanks, Dan.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
As it relates to the tent structure and rain, is there any requirement as um, as going forward as to um gutters or rain diversion um o- off of the tent?
Brian, if you perhaps want to talk about the existing condition and perhaps the how it works now, and I mean, obviously, well, not obviously, but this um, except would be a a similar condition that there is now where it's not necessarily channeled and kind of replaces uh, particular surface, but if you could kind of take us through that?
Yeah, so there's the the existing structure that's there now, the canopy, um, uh, it currently um, uh, functions in uh um, a manner in which the rain falls on it. It's a relatively small area, so you do get some runoff off the edges of the of the uh canopy, but it's such a small area that it's not, I would say, anything that's of of a nuisance um, would it impact anything? In fact, if if positioned properly with this new configuration, with this new plan with the planter boxes, some of that actually would, can be positioned to drip into the planter boxes, um, at least on the uh, uh, the parking lot side. Um, it is a relatively small area, I would say. Um, if actually, if anything, it does help shield a little bit some of the runoff that's, um, you know, direct impacting or directly hitting on the pavement, putting it on a, on a vehicular surf, otherwise vehicular surface and pushing it out to the uh, to the street, but um, there's no plans for a gutter on it. Um, again, the the twenty by twenty area is relatively small, and it would be partitioned in such a way that it would be broken up into quadrants, where, um, if you look at the um, current configuration, but also the proposed future wooden canopy, the roof would be split in such a fashion where at the very least it would be half, but it would be more likely in four quadrants, so you'd have smaller areas running off on each side. So, the li- little impact from the runoff.
But is that consistent at this point? I understand we're going from what was a temporary situation to something that's more permanent. Is there anything required in our ordinance to address the water runoff from either this? Or I guess at some point when there's a wooden structure, or does the wooden structure get addressed later for its own approval? So I guess it's two parts of the question, is anything we need to do now? And on the wooden structure, would that have to be subject to review later on?
I'll say, a- as proposed, we're we're looking to have those, um, that structure. Um. Our request is to have it be approved now, subject to uh construction and and staff approval, um, that it beats the requirements of what we've, um, you know, explained and specified as part of the uh approval, um. Brian, I'll let you speak to if there's a requirement for that. Ultimately, my understanding is that the, we're essentially replacing the existing pervious excuse, um, uh, impervious, excuse me, the opposite of what I said, um, area, um, with uh one with similar material that it wouldn't necessarily trigger um either the need to redirect or to treat stormwater, but maybe you can speak to that bit.
I I'll be honest, I'm not aware that there is a requirement um uh to to collect it otherwise, um.
Mr. Wiseman or Mr. Bridger, can you speak to a- any ordinance requirements we have for that that address Claudia's question? Uh, I don't think that require, but please go ahead.
I'd be happy to. So the ordinance uh, only speaks to an increase of impervious surface, not necessarily changing from one impervious surface to another. So from uh, an ordinance standpoint, um, it's considered impervious. There is no change. If if the placement of the tent structure had a negative impact on adjoining property, um, that's certainly something that we would look at. Um, but just from an ordinance enforcement standpoint, it's it's an even swap.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I just would like to offer a comment on this, uh, and I praise Claudia for raising the the question. I don't think this is an issue from stormwater management perspective, but it is an issue for customers who, uh, even though this is not that large a structure with the with the um, heaviness of rains that we see these days, it could be really drenching for somebody walking under the canopy, uh, and I say this from personal experience, because we had porches on our house without gutters and uh, during a heavy rain, you really got soaked going uh, under the edge of the porch. So I, it may not be code required, but I would recommend when the permanent structure gets gets built, that at least on sides where uh, customers are likely to be passing uh, in and out of the tent, especially on the side facing the building where they have to go in and out to get drinks. Uh, I would think it would make a lot of sense to put a gutter on that side uh, for that convenience factor, not a stormwater factor.
Excellent, excellent thought there.
And Claudia Wilson Anderson, did that, did, were your questions answered? To your satisfaction?
I think so. I I guess the question I had when we're talking about increasing impervious coverage or existing impervious coverage, this was a temporary structure, so I don't know if we look at it as a continuation of a temporary structure, or now that we're formalizing this as a more permanent situation, are there more permanent uh, views that we have toward it and changes that we might want to request? As it becomes permanent, rather than, again, it was temporary, so we didn't deal with some of these issues. I would view this as an increase in impervious coverage as it related to the non-temporary situation. So the prior.
But it's, but it's, but it sits on top of a completely impervious.
It's on a parking lot.
Yes, okay.
No, there's no increase in impervious surface.
Yeah, so it just, it changes it from from pavement to rooftop, sorry.
Understood, yes. Thank you.
Perhaps I suggest, um, because I I think that is a good point, well, perhaps not required, but that at that time, we would work with staff on that final administrative construction approval to see if it made sense to channel in a certain way. My my suspicion is that there may be some downsides to that, you know, obviously, and there are restrictions on channeling water on other people's properties, other, you know, perhaps um, negative impacts, but that we would look at that at that point, and if it made sense to catch it and 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 kind of direct it in an area or or treat it in some way that we will work with staff on that at at that time, I think it's actually an excellent thought.
Yeah.
Thank you, my question's answered.
Thank you. Um, anything else, Mayor Frida?
I, yeah, I I think we're overthinking the water coming off the top of this proposed structure. The tent is there, it's been there for years. Patrons do not, that I know of, come in and complain about water dripping off the tent. And if it's raining that hard, they're going to be inside the building. Not that many are going to be under the tent, so uh, I just think we're we're overthinking this more than it needs to be, but enough said, thank you.
Thanks, thank you. So uh, we've interrupted you many times, Mr. Perry. Why don't you continue with your with your testimony?
I think you might have um, perhaps not interrupted and and just ultimately sensed approaching the end, yeah, exactly. Um, Brett, one cleanup, um, um, Brian, while I, as 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 I love to do, put a slide up that says thank you. Uh, if you could, you know, we did get two memos here, one from Mr. Lesko and and a joint one from um, um, our zoning officer and land use engineer. Um, I believe we hit all of the suggestions or 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 comments that they made um, and are willing to able to accommodate them. Any other ones you want to highlight or or of concern? I believe that we're able to accommodate essentially everything that they've discussed um, and and have addressed, but if there's anything left as a cleanup item, maybe now is the time, but I believe we're able to confirm that we can comply with all of their suggestions and and comments.
Agreed by me, yeah.
I think uh, the question, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Wiseman, were you gonna say?
Uh, I just, just, there was one staff comment, uh, just asking the applicant if they can advise if there are any agreements in place with neighboring properties for the use of parking spaces for patrons or staff. Um, I don't know if I heard uh, if there are any.
There's uh, nothing necessary in place. There are uh, agreements of for um, for, I'll just say, neighborly um, conduct and making sure that things are are done um, appropriately, um, I suppose, um, uh, in in conjunction with their neighbors, but as of as of right now, there's there's nothing, um, you know, in that would up in writing that would allow, you know, something to uh, staff to park, they they park elsewhere.
Okay, thank you. Um, that was, that was the only outstanding comment I had, uh, other than the the two procedural additional staff comments at the end of of the report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I am wondering if um, or the, I guess I need to be reminded what kind of um, latitude there is for designating the area that um, your, one of your later slides showed as two parking spaces on Nassau Street might be instead a pick-up and drop-off for um, ride-share. And I feel like that's might be a great location in town for for that use and uh, I wonder what what other board members think about that and what the applicant thinks.
Madam Chair, just before um, you you start, I'll just say from the applicant's perspective, our understanding is, while we'd love to have a a solid say on that, I believe the best we can really do is um, agree to, you know, participate and assist in closing it off and then kind of yielding that space back to the town for uh, its uh, determination. So, you know, while we would perhaps love to have it be dedicated to Mr. Ryan to personal use or 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 something for the club, uh, for the um, for the inn. Ultimately, our understanding is that once we are, we would be cooperating in restoring them, um, and then it would be the towns um, as they would with any other street um, closing, I suppose, in deciding what's best in how to use them. I don't, we we certainly do agree. Um, some combination, uh, particularly if it is required of an ADA space, uh, but you know, I I, we we believe that the, you know, de facto use of the semi-closed-off has been, you know, for ride-sharing, being able to have a kiss and ride spot. Those things seem to be successful and perhaps the 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 municipality would would do something like that, um, and we would certainly be supportive of it. But I I, my understanding is that for the purpose of the application, you know, we would certainly agree to help.
Got, I got it. So uh, so do we need DOT's approval as well? Does um, Dan or Derek, do you know? We have to work with DOT about whether there's parking spaces or a or a um, ride-share stop there?
DOT has already uh, deemed that area uh, acceptable for parking. Um, so if it were to go to parking spaces, it would essentially be a permit from the DEP or a letter of no interest from, sorry, not DEB, DOT, um, to to allow those parking spaces to go in. Um, if it were to switch to a loading zone, um, that would need full DOT approval.
Now, is a loading zone, does that apply to um, deliveries of food and um, packages and people? I mean, is that just a loading of loading and unloading of whatever, or can it be restricted to multimodal transit somehow?
I don't know the specifics to that question. I'd certainly be happy to look into it.
Yeah, I I think the town, the town can deal with the details of the loading zone.
You're right, you're right. This is not a, not not an application thing. You're right, you're right, Mayor, thanks. Um, okay, so other questions for um, any of, uh, for Mr. Kennedy or any of his witnesses, either of his witnesses, I should say, from board members or staff? If not, I will open the meeting up now for public comment. We have um, seventy-one members of the public who are attending tonight. Two people have had their hand up since the very beginning. Um, and so um, I I will let all of you know in the attendees area that if you would like to um, uh, address the board, uh, have comments or questions about this matter, now is the time to virtually raise your hand um, by clicking on the raise hand icon uh, at the bottom of your Zoom screen, screen, or if you're on the phone by pressing star nine. And we will um, as we take comment, we will um, pull you over from the attendees room into the panelists room. And then Mr. Mueller, our attorney, will swear you in, each of you, and we'll ask you to spell your last name. You know, tell us what street you live on. And um, we'll take uh, comments in the order in which hands were raised. So I see that we've um, brought one or two folks over already. No, I'm not talking. Julie Zimmerman?
Hi. Thank you.
We need to, uh, Mr. Mueller needs to swear you in for starters.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes.
Just one or firm, please state your full name, spell your last name, and state the street you live on.
Julie Zimmerman, Z I M M E R M A N. I live at eighty-seven Cedar Lane in the Riverside neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to say, um, I pretty much concur with everything Justin said at the beginning of this meeting. This is very interesting lens into the planning board. And I also just want to say, my two favorite places in Princeton are probably the Public Library and the Ivy, and they share similar attributes. It's where you see your neighbors, you see young kids with their parents, you see older people, which I'm now falling into that demographic, you see everyone, you see grad students. It's a great place to be and uh, it's it's about as diverse as Princeton can get. I was gonna say it gets us out of our bubble, but nothing really gets us out of our bubble. It's as close to getting out of the Princeton bubble as one can get. Um, when it comes to parking, I just want to say, a lot of times I walk, by the way, and I love walking to the Ivy, because then I don't have to worry about anything I eat or drink there, and I get a little exercise. May see some people along the way. I might bring my dog to the front yard. Um, but when it's raining, I can park in the university parking, which is behind the post office. That's at night or on the weekends. You know, so that's what I do, and it doesn't take parking from anyone else. I don't even have to drive on Nassau Street to get there. Um, and just my last point is that our town has been prioritizing, and it's important to prioritize affordable housing, but this is sort of one of the lone affordable places to congregate and eat and drink in town. We don't really have that. Anyplace else, you're gonna spend fifty to a hundred dollars a person to go out in Princeton to have a drink and a meal. Um, so I would, I love going to the Ivy, so that's it, thank you. Oh, and I'd just like to say, I wish this type of vetting had been done to the McMansion next to me at one sixty-one Patton Avenue. I can't believe the level of detail. Good for you guys, I credit you, but it's I wish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have Alexandria's iPhone. I know iPhone is not your last name.
If you could raise your right.
Sorry about that.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes.
Just one or firm, please state your full name, spell your last name, and state your address.
Yep, Alexandria Seika Hecht, H E C H T. I live at one seventy-nine Hamilton Avenue. Um, wanna just echo exactly what has been said in the previous speaker, um, and I'll just add like a couple more details. This is the kind of small business that I think every um, place should be dying to have, and we're so grateful that they exist. Uh, I run a fundraiser every year for the Littlebrook PTA. Um, at the Ivy, they make it so easy. It's a wonderful gathering spot. And yeah, the affordability could not be um, should not be understated for the entire community, um, as well as just the livelihood and that it brings, I mean, sorry, the liveliness that it brings to the street in that uh, in that business, it really helps create like a second central business district, right, in that little cluster. Um, and people come to that outdoor seating, have a drink, and then they'll go to the restaurants next door. I mean, it really is um, like an anchor tenant of our side of that that community, um, and thanks for hearing and the thoughtfulness of the board on this.
So could you spell?
Also, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, but it's, can I add one more thing, which is I was so happy to see uh, the ten bike, the ten bike parking spots is awesome, because we love to bike down to uh, the Ivy. And that's awesome.
Did you spell your last name again, if you don't mind?
H E C H T.
H E C H T, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hecht. Um, Carrie, who's up next? I know you've brought over a couple of people. I don't know um, the order in which you brought them over. So, is he Caston next or Nicholas?
I believe so, yes, Mr. Caston, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Hello.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes.
So it's one or firm, please state your full name, spell your last name, uh, and your street address, uh, and just your street.
Uh, my name is Isabel Casden. My last name is spelled K A S as in Sam, D as in David, I N as in Nancy. I was a longtime resident of Princeton. I'm now resident of West Windsor, so I don't know if that precludes me from making a comment, but.
No, you're welcome to make a comment, and we don't know, we don't need to know your exact address. We just sort of like to have.
My street address in West Windsor is on Scott Avenue. Um, but yes, my name is Izzy Casden. I'm a former longtime resident of Princeton. Um, I now live in West Windsor, but I've been a regular attendee at the Ivy Inn's Tuesday trivia nights for almost a decade. I started going when I first moved back to Princeton as a young professional, and it helped me build a community. I actually met my husband as part of the group with which I got connected through Ivy and trivia nights, and I can't overstate the extent to which the Ivy felt like cheers to me in those years of my life where everybody knows my name, the staff got to know all of us. And even if I was too busy uh, or, you know, overwhelmed to do anything social all week, going to trivia on Tuesday, Tuesdays is the one thing I did, and feeling known and recognized at this bar made me feel like a part of a true community, which does so much for one's well-being, so I'm so grateful for that. And as other people have said, I just think that these are the kinds of establishments that Princeton needs, ones that feel accessible, that build a sense of belonging for everyone, especially young people and people who might not be able to afford the cost of drinks or a meal at other bars in town. And I would agree that the outdoor seating is a better use of the land than the parking spaces were before. I went to the Ivy for many years when it was parking spaces. And I just think that the outdoor dining lends a sense of vibrancy to Nassau Street, and it has significantly enhanced my experience of going there. There were times on trivia nights before the Ivy had that outdoor space where there was just absolutely no room to breathe, there was nowhere to sit, because there just wasn't enough space indoors for all the attendees, and that really hasn't been a problem in recent years. So this space has helped considerably. Um, and there's plenty of parking nearby. As another commenter said, I myself park in the Princeton University lot behind the E quad when I attend trivia nights, and it's a very close walk to the Ivy Inn from there, and there are always dozens of available spots to park when to park there. It's actually one of the easier places to park nearby in terms of going out for a drink or a meal in Princeton. So I just wanted to conclude by saying that the Ivy fills an important niche in our community as a business. It's something Princeton needs and that Princetonians love. It's a true asset to our community, and I would hope that the board would consider enabling them to maintain their outdoor space, which clearly sustains their business, so thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Kikis, I believe you're next, and I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name.
That was pretty good. Thank you.
Mr. Muller will swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
Just one or firm, please state your full names, spell your last name, and give your street.
My name is Nicholas Kikis, K I K I S. I live at forty three Woodland Drive here in Princeton.
Thank you.
I just uh, first, I just wanted to to thank everyone for the opportunity to uh, speak and provide these comments. It was a great presentation from Mr. Ryan and his team. Um, and I'd like to commend the planning board for kind of detailed questions. Um, I feel almost my testimony is redundant, given the the comments that that preceded me. Um, I really wanted to make sure that, you know, the 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 feedback of the community on that the Ivy Inn is a Princeton institution. And I really wanted to provide that expression of support for maintaining the outdoor space that they currently have. I think converting um, private, you know, off-street parking into a dynamic and family-friendly space is the exact type of uh, land use that that Princeton should be promoting. Um, and I think it's it's great that that, you know, this is uh, this is happening and and the investment that is being made. Um, you know, is uh, is, you know, able to move forward uh, with your permission. So with that, I just really wanted to express the strong support, you know, for the the project. Um, as it pertains to parking, I think the concerns um, are really non-existent. As as, you know, the testimony has shown, people, this has been in place for five years. Um, parking is is ample on Nassau Street. Um, especially in that area, and uh, you know, there there's been no uh, detrimental impact by having it as this in the use that it currently is. And maintaining it that way, I think, would be an absolute benefit to the town, um, and is the exact type of thing that we'd like to see uh, more of in Princeton. So with that, I just wanted to express my support for the project and and hope you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Henderson, who's next?
Oh, Wasserman, excuse me, Wasserman.
Suzy, Sukie, excuse me, Sukie Wasserman, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My legal name is Susan Wasserman. I live at one sixty Meadowbrook Drive in Princeton, and I'm.
Mister, Mister Muller needs to swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
Okay, so it's one or firm.
Okay, I live at one sixty Meadowbrook Drive. I'm on the Board of Housing Initiatives of Princeton.
Uh-oh. Lost her.
Yeah, I believe we um. We completely lost Ms. Wasserman. Well, I hope she dials back in. Um. And I hope she doesn't talk for three minutes and not realize that she that she got cut off. Um. So.
She's back in already, actually.
Oh, oh, good, okay. Um, back into the, okay, can you bring her over, Mr. Mr. Henderson, bring Sukie?
Yep, she'll be rejoining shortly.
Okay, great. Okay, Ms. Wasserman, you're still up. Sorry about that.
Difficulties, I guess. I'm on the Board of Housing Initiatives of Princeton, and um, we envision uh, welcoming and inclusive community where all people can afford to live and thrive. And part of that are the third spaces that uh, Justin mentioned. And we believe the Ivy is one of the places, one of the few places, in addition to the library, the pool, some public spaces. Where it is very accessible to our clients as they become part of the community. We also have been invited in years past and this year to do fundraisers at this public space outside the Ivy. We're very grateful for this. We believe that being outside enables us, one, to have community members meet and talk to each other that wouldn't happen inside. Because it's very easy when you're standing next to a table. It wouldn't be as comfortable walking up to someone you don't know um, inside the bar. It also encourages people to stop in from the street that see there's a gathering and sees that a nonprofit is there. And so often people will come in and join and learn more about the work we do, which benefits the whole community. Um, and we're just so grateful for this space. We we believe over. It really helps us bring in a lot of new people to our work, and like I said, is a place that both the families we serve, as well as the people who support us, can all be there together. So I I hope that the outdoor area is voted in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, do we have Amelia Emerson? Is that correct, Ian?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. Um, I'll be sworn in.
Yep, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes.
Just one or firm, please state your, set your full names, spell your last name, and give your address.
My name is Amelia Emerson, E M I S O N, and my address is one twenty seven Meadowbrook Drive. I'm actually here to represent my entire family. Um, they're unable to come and speak currently, but um. I want to just say that I think that the Ivy is like really a pillar of our community, and I really wanted to echo what Julie Zimmerman. And what Sukie Wasserman have shared about the accessibility and the affordability of the Ivy. And just how important it is as a third space and as a gathering space um, for people to meet. I actually had my first drink at the Ivy. I'm twenty two years old. Um, so that was really a privilege for me. Um, my parents were so pleased to be able to bring me into the outdoor space and not the indoor space. Um, no offense, but uh, just as a consideration that it really brings um, a new light to our community. And is a place for, you know, parents to bring their younger children and for the university and for other people to aspire towards generativity. And so many other things. I think that's really what we're lacking in Princeton. I know a lot of our residents are getting older, um, but generativity and like the start of new beginnings is really. What um, I think makes Princeton Princeton. Uh, my family grew up here where really, we really started here as a young family. I went K through twelve in the Princeton Public Schools, and it was such a great experience. And I really want other families to have that experience, and you know, without date night, is that really gonna happen? Um, so just to bring like a younger perspective to the crowd. I think the Ivy is really doing something unique, and with that outdoor space, they can really continue to contribute something unique. Um, to the to the town and to the atmosphere of Princeton. Thank you to the board for your time, and thank you for all of your excellent research. I thought the questions that you brought were so excellent. And I will yield to the next person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emerson. Uh, so I think next we have Mr. Shear, and then after that, um, Mr. Hill. Uh, and then we'll bring over John and his phone and Brian Rosner. So, and as of right now, there are no other hands up. So if you wish to address the board, um, especially if you have, you know, something to say that has not yet been said. Um, now is the time to to raise your hand. Mr. Shear, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess I'll raise my hand.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I affirm.
Or or firm, please state your full names, spell your last name, and give your.
Sure, I'm Adam Shear, uh, S C H E E R. I live at twenty Gordon Way. Uh, my family's been privileged to uh, lived in Princeton uh, since two thousand and five, and since then. The Ivy's played an important role in our lives. My wife and I have celebrated our fortieth anniversary at the Ivy, as well as our fiftieth. Our fiftieth was held during COVID, and the Ivy was the only place that we could find to host our gathering. Uh, because it had the that outdoor space, and we're very grateful that we didn't miss that milestone, thanks to Richie and the team. Uh, in uh, my uh, volunteer life, I have led the Williams College Alumni Association. Uh, for the uh, greater Princeton area, central New Jersey. And uh, it's very, as as the leader of a local volunteer organization. It's extraordinarily difficult to find places to gather in Princeton. They're either quite expensive, as a number of other folks have testified. Uh, where they're inaccessible, or they're inflexible. Uh, the Ivy's been unique as 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 a, as as a third place that has opened its doors to us consistently. Uh, we have a very diverse range of 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 alumni and uh, other stakeholders in the community. Uh, and uh, it's critical to have have a place that's both welcoming and affordable. Uh, oftentimes, uh, we don't incur any incremental costs, except for what we spend ordering food. Uh, which is a deal that, quite frankly, nobody else will give us in in town. And uh, the uh, outdoor space is exceptionally welcoming. Uh, we've been able to decorate the outdoor space with our colors, purple and gold, and bring in signage to uh, customize the outdoor space for for our group. Again, it's very unusual, that's very, those are very unusual accommodations, and it's a testimony to the sense of commitment to the community. And uh, the openness that Richie and the team have consistently demonstrated. So I just wanted to express my support for the outdoor space. Note the special uh, uh, the the special contributions that outdoor space makes to our community. And to express appreciation to the team at the Ivy, including Richie and the others, and as well as this board for considering this very important. Uh, accommodation for our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next up, we have Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Andrew Hill.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Muller will swear you in.
Raise your right hand.
Oh, one second.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
So it's one or firm, please state your full names, spell your last name, and give your street.
Yes, my full name is Andrew Hill, last name spelled H I L L. My street is Fox Run Drive, and that's in Plainsboro.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I I'd like to speak from from a personal level. I am actually currently at the Ivy Inn right now, as as luck may have it. Um, and I've been from this area, the adjacent areas since childhood. Um, the Montgomery area and, you know, the Plainsboro area, and I've enjoyed the luxuries and the benefits of Princeton and that you guys have put together over the many years. So first of all, thank you for that. Um, I I'm part of a running group in the area that meets every Thursday, um, a rather large running group. Um, and we've enjoyed some of the liveliness and the vibrancy that this outdoor seating has given us. Whether that be uh, my personal story of meeting my girlfriend at this group, uh, the ability to celebrate birthdays at the Ivy Inn's. Uh, you know, outdoor area and have that strong sense of community that we've been able to build um, from from my personal statement, uh, two and a half years worth of that. Um, and it feels like a true community atmosphere. Uh, from the standpoint of, you know, the parking question, right? It definitely adds to the walkable downtown that has been curated. Um, it is seen when you're there, as I am right now. Um, they've got an amazing staff, but it's, and it's a true small business that really represents their community well. Adds to that feeling of community that Princeton provides and and that we love so much. Um, and and so I really just want to speak to that and just echo the support that it's gotten before with its affordability and its accommodation as an organization, as a business. Uh, they allow a a group of sweaty runners to, you know, mingle outside and enjoy, you know, their every Thursday or other days that we may want to come here and participate in the activities. So they've done a truly tremendous job with that outdoor area, and it is my personal statement to say that we echo strong support for the continuation of that outdoor seating. So um, thank you for giving me this platform. Um, I'd like to thank the mayor for his advocacy as well. Um, and with that, I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Um, and then next we have, or had, I'm not seeing him on the screen right now, John, who's on an iPhone. John's iPhone, I'm not seeing anymore. Um, so we'll go ahead to um, Brian Rosner, Rosner. Um, if you would activate your camera and unmute yourself, Mr. Rosner, uh, Mr. Muller will swear you in.
All right.
Apologies if I mispronounced your. Hi.
Uh, you're hearing me, okay?
Yes, we are.
Um, so.
But you need to be.
Oh, I need to be sworn in, sorry.
Yes, sir. Yeah, thanks.
Swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Do you? I, I, oh, sorry, I can't hear anything. One second.
Oh, okay.
Now I hear you. Hands up.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes.
So it's one or firm, please state your full names, spell your last name, and give your street.
Brian Rosner, R O S E N E R, thirty five Moran, at Princeton, New Jersey.
Thank you.
So as luck would have it, I am also at the Ivy Inn right now as part of the running group that Andrew referenced earlier. And I can also say that as a fifteen-year resident of Princeton, I was a member of Izzy's trivia team when she met her husband, Dave. Um, so being somebody who lives in the neighborhood here, two blocks away from the Ivy. I can say that since the outdoor space went in. It has transformed this stretch of Nassau Street for the better. Um. What used to be kind of a drab outdoor space that was just for parking is now vibrant and lively. Um, I feel like I am home every night when I get home from work, and I drive past those lights before I turn onto my street. Um, I now can't imagine Princeton or the town without the Ivy outdoor seating. So I echo all the other positive comments that have been made. I want to respect everyone's time, but I can't speak high more. I I can't speak highly enough about how great this has been since it's been here. So thank you for the time. I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Rosner. Um, any other members of the public um, wish to address the board right now is the time to virtually raise your hand or press star nine if you're on your phone. I am seeing none, and so I will close the public comment portion of the of the meeting. Um. Wow, Mr. Ryan, I.
Is Rosner?
I hope that you um.
Excuse me, Louise.
Had a great time hearing everything you just heard. Yes.
There's an M Shear who's. On here.
I'm sorry, that's that, that's Adam Shear. I I was just using my wife's account, so I reverted back to her name, sorry.
Yeah, he's already, yes, he already.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, sharp eyes. Um, anyway, yes, we we uh, we we do not often have um, a lot of people coming to say the kinds of things. That people said about you and your business tonight, and um, it really speaks volumes uh. Uh, to the the vibe you have created and that you sustain, and it's a community that um, that people feel at your establishment, so.
Well, I can't thank you all.
Props to you for all of that.
Thank you so much.
Uh, so are there um, further questions from board members, um, things you want to discuss? Um. Now is our time to um, to deliberate and. Address any final questions people have. Um, and if there are no, Mr. Cohen.
I I just want to really quickly state that I think the the most compelling planning proofs, the reasons to grant these variances is that. By closing this curb cut, we actually end up with more parking than we would end up with if we had put the accessible parking space on the site. So I think that's that's a win-win. And uh, in terms of the setback, because all of the neighboring structures are right up against the sidewalk. I I'm I'm shocked that we don't have a prevailing setback. Uh, rule in place in this zone. We do in some of our other zones, which would automatically make this three-foot setback complying. Compliant because everybody else is setback that or less, but I just wanted to uh. Hammer in those two really salient uh, justifications for the variances.
Yes, and thank you. Those are important things to put on the record. I couldn't agree more. Um, other comments? Uh, do we want to then um. Uh, move and second this and then talk about conditions or. Do that um, going going over conditions first? Or do that going, going over conditions first?
I'm happy to move it to keep this going.
Thanks, Madam Frida. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Nat. Nat jumped in first, Nat Bodikheimer. Okay, Mr. Muller, you, you can, we, we, we talked about a, a number of things. I, I know you were taking lots of notes, so why don't we go through?
Yeah.
Through those.
Okay, so, so this is what they're seeking, and what the motion will be is minor site plan approval, the two variances which have been discussed at some length, and the conditions. I'm not going to go through the conditions which are in the memos. As recommendations, suggestions, they've agreed to all of them. The only additional ones that the board might want to consider, and I want clarification on one, is to work with staff to determine if roof, roof drainage should be channeled and how. That was something that was raised by Mr. Cohen.
That's, that's not...
The mayor commented on that.
It's not part of my motion. I, I, I'm not including it in my motion.
Not part of your motion. Okay. Access, the planters showed access routes within the outdoor signing area and from the streets and adjacent parking lots. And then the only other one actually relates to the planters between the, the planters themselves and the vegetation in it. Are we talking about 30 inches between the two? Or is it, it just wasn't clear to me, 30 and 30?
My, my understanding is that within the site triangle, which is 15 feet in both directions from the corner.
Yeah.
It is a maximum height of 30 inches, planter and vegetation combined.
Okay.
And that beyond that, it's a maximum of 60 inches when you count the planters and the vegetation. Is that correct, Mr. Wiseman? Or, or is it a different thing beyond the site?
Beyond, beyond the site triangle, I believe it, it could be. I believe what they're proposing is up to 90 inches. So it'd be a 30-inch tall concrete planter with possibly 60 inches along the driveway entrance. And it would be possibly 30 inches plus 36 inches along Nassau Street.
And, which I think, I mean, I think that sounds, personally, I think that's good. So, you know, a little bit of a sense of enclosure and of course separates people from cars on the, on the driveway. I, I did, I would like for the, for the applicant to, to use native shrubs instead of the, instead of what they have in their, or what they're contemplating. I mean, I think you could switch those out very easily. They're both evergreen. One is native, one is non-native. One grows way higher than the other and...
Our boxwoods, man.
More difficult to...
Boxwoods aren't native.
They are not? Okay, I like them.
But, well...
They also survive anything.
They grow too slow.
I, I don't have to think we have to decide what they should be.
No, we don't have to decide right now and, and...
I think we skip Laurel. And then it would be up to the, the staff, the landscape architect and the rest of the staff to determine what they should be.
Hey, Jerry, just a question. On the height, are we saying up to, out of the site triangle for the rest of the height? Are we saying up to 90 inches? The only reason I say that is I, I think once they things start to grow and they have to keep them at a certain height, they're probably going to want them a little lower. Because at that height, somebody's got to get on a ladder to trim them. And I think after they do that two or three times in a row, they're going to lower them. But anyway, I just want to make sure we don't tell them it has to be 90 inches.
Okay.
Yeah, agreed. Yep.
But I think that's a very good point.
I think what the motion is, is that it, the planting outside of the triangle, site triangle, be consistent with the application, which have those two different heights, one along Nassau Street, one along the driveway. But that this, and the condition that we're talking about is native planting instead of what there's proposed.
Yep.
Thanks, David.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and, and that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay. Then we have a motion and a second. We've laid out conditions. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Cappizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes. Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carries, right?
Yes.
You're sort of cutting in and out, Carrie. Great, thank you. Thanks again to the applicant. And good luck. Again, congratulations. You have some adoring and very loyal customers, which is really something to be proud of, obviously.
Thank you all so much. It means a lot.
Okay, and, and...
Thank you.
You called your vote on that. I wasn't sure.
She's alternate. We have a, we have a quorum without her, or more than quorum.
Did that, did that vote on it?
Did not.
Did not.
Nat did vote.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Perry. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Thanks, Mr. Kennedy.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you all so much.
Okay.
Take care.
You too.
All right.
Moving on, the next item on the agenda is an application to be carried to October. This is for King Interests LLC. This preliminary and finer ma, final major site plan with variances at 338 and 342 Nassau Street, block 34.01, lots 14 and 32. And this is file number P-2424-473P.
And Madam, Madam Chair, they've, we noticed the notice is proper and the board has jurisdiction. And then as you've indicated, and as Justin indicated, it's going to be carried to the, to that date at this point.
October 9th, yeah. And I assume no further notice is required?
No further notice.
Of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Next up, we have applications for extensions of time. This is five different applications, all seeking an extension of time to hear their application. And my understanding is that there are no issues with jurisdiction or with notice on any of the following. So I, I won't ask about that for each of these. Is that, is that appropriate, Mr. Muller?
Yes, it is appropriate. Just, just to clarify, four of the five, an extension of time to file their all minor subdivisions, subdivision plat or deeds that hasn't been done. They're out of the time period to do that. Justin will explain in more detail, although he did in, in the, for all of the memos. And the fifth, that's 271 Witherspoon. That's just to extend the, the protection period. And that would be for, what are they, what are they asking for? For a one-year, one-year extension? Justin?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So first up to 217 Witherspoon LLC. This is a major site plan. As Mr. Muller was saying, an extension of vesting rights. It's file P-2222-244P. Approval was granted in June 15th of 2023, expires June 15th, 2025. So I guess, well, maybe Justin, you can explain, since these are already expired and they're, anyway. No, they're not. This one mentioned an expiration date. The other ones don't. At 217 Witherspoon Street, file P-2522-2440TH. Justin?
Madam Chair, I, I, I think it would be, is viable swearing people in.
Okay, yes, thanks.
Okay. Justin, if you could raise your right hand?
Yes.
Any, ever other staff who's going to be participating?
I'm not sure if they will for each.
Okay, I'll swear them in anyway.
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
I do.
So let's warn our firm, that would be Justin, Derek, and Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to repeat a lot of what was just said, but, but for a point. So we have those, we now have five extension requests from applicants, like Mr. Muller said. The first one is for a major site plan application, and the remaining four are for minor subdivision applications. And that's very significant tonight. There are significant differences of what is being asked for as well as the basis that the board has to grant those requests based on those two types of applications. And that's all found in the municipal land use law. So this first one is the major site plan one. You may remember a similar extension request most recently back in January for a major site plan at 21 Wiggins, the old High Tops building. Just to kind of, to summarize, when the board approves a major site plan application, the application then has a period of protection from zoning changes for two years from the adoption of the findings of fact. Under the MLUL, the board then has the discretion to extend that period of protection for one year up to three times. The extension request before you is at 217 Witherspoon Street. A commercial building is on the site, fronting Nass, uh, fronting Witherspoon Street, excuse me, with a parking lot in the rear. The building's probably most known for the Hilton's Clothing Store and the, the wireless tower above it, too, if you look up. The, the application, and I'm not going to go fully into what the application was because that's, it's been approved by the board. The application the board approved in April 2023 was for a four-unit residential building in the rear of the site on part of that parking lot. The board approved the findings of fact on June 15th, 2023. So that period of protection expired on June 15th, 2025, about a month ago. One thing that's commonly misunderstood is that site plan approvals don't necessarily expire. They just protect from zoning changes for two years. So for, for this application specifically, the one before us, there have not been any zoning changes that would affect the approval to date. Meaning the applicant could still go through compliance and get their plan signed off on and then go over and get building permits and, and build. Now that'd be a bit risky because they don't have that protection because a zoning change could occur, you know, with the, the council introduction, board review, and then council hearing. And then, then they would not be protected anymore from that hypothetical change. So they're asking for another year to protect against that, basically. It would run to June 15th, 2026, so it goes retroactive to that first approval. The applicant has stated that they pursued completion of the project, but quote, "economic uncertainty and construction costs make the project challenging at this time", end quote. The applicant is here, obviously, Madam Chair, represented by Mr. Kennedy. If you were the board have any questions for them, and I'm happy to take any questions as well.
Okay, thank you, Justin. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy or for Justin? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion on this extension of time? Mr. Cohen is moving it, I assume? Thank you. And is, uh, segmented by Mr. O'Donnell. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Cappizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
And that runs from, what, what day, Justin?
Retroactive to June 15th of 2025 to June 15th of next year.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Estate Shore. This was a minor subdivision, seeking an extension of time. Approval was granted September 19th, 2024. This is at 479 Jefferson Road, file number P-2323-403MS. Mr. Lesko?
Jerry, do I need to be sworn in again?
Yes. Square his right hand. Do you swear, swear affirm testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
Let's warn him first.
Thank you. So that was the easy one. And forget everything I just said, because now we're talking about the minor subdivision application and, and they're different under the MLUL. Minor subdivisions are defined as subdivisions of not more than two lots. The board approves a subdivision, then approves the findings of fact, as you know. Then the applicant goes through their compliance period, leading to getting their plat or deeds signed off on. And then they must file it with the county within 190 days of the approved findings of fact. After that, they then get a period of protection, but we're not talking about that tonight with any of these four applications. We're just talking about basically the timeline to file the deed or the plat with the county. For an extension of that 190-day period, here is what the municipal land use law says the board has to consider. Quote, "One, that the developer was borrowed or prevented directly or indirectly from filing because of delays in obtaining legally required approvals from other governmental or quasi-governmental entities. And two, that the developer applied promptly for and diligently pursued the required approvals", end quote. So if the developer proves that they applied promptly and diligently for the approvals and that they were held up by a governmental or a non-governmental, or a quasi-governmental entity, the MLUL states that, quote, "the length of the extension shall be equal to the period of delay caused by the wait for the required approvals as determined by the planning board", end quote. And I, I'd just like to note that we've advised the attorney and the applicant's professionals that we were going to include these requirements in our reports and to the board after, and to the applicants after we received some of the first requests and then throughout the process. Some of the requests, you'll see if you look back at the documents, were delayed from going on an agenda until we received escrow fulfillment, either for outstanding bills from the application or for the review of the extension, you know, basically paying the professionals tonight. So that's why you might see a request from March, but it's obviously July right now when we're hearing it. One other thing I want to note is that if the subdivision, minor subdivision extensions are not granted tonight and the time period to file has lapsed, essentially voiding the approval, the applicant could come back to the board with the same application. That doctrine of res judicata, that doesn't allow an applicant that was denied to come back with the same thing, that does not apply as technically these applications were not denied or the, the approval was not denied of the application. We would just then start from square one with the review. So all that being said, I'm about to get into the case at 479 Jefferson Road. Are there any questions from board members at this time?
Go ahead.
So the first application is the applicant Estate Shore at 479 Jefferson Road. The, the board approved a one-lot to two-lot minor subdivision on June 25th, 2024, last summer. Variances were approved to allow 2.23-acre lots, where 0.25 acres is the minimum lot size in the R6 zone. A front yard setback variance was denied on Kyler Road. And 17 conditions were imposed by the board, including limiting the maximum floor area ratio and maximum impervious coverage. As I said earlier, we're not relitigating any of that. I just wanted to, you know, inform the board of, of the application and just give you background so you understand which one it was. The deadline to file the subdivision was March 28th, 2025, and we received a request for an extension on March 26th, 2025. The only other governmental approval was from the Mercer County Planning Board, and the applicant received that on December 11th, 2024. And they've requested a 180-day extension to file the subdivision. With that said, that's all the background I have. I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair, or to the applicant.
Okay. You have anything you to add, Mr. Kennedy, that, that the board needs to know, you think?
Absolutely, and, and briefly. First, thank Justin for, for the synopsis and the explanation of, of the standard here. Just a few things to add. In addition to what he went through from a timeline perspective, yes, the, the one outside approval was obtained... In addition to what he went through from a timeline perspective, yes, the the one outside approval was obtained. Kind of at the December time period, so it was promptly applied for. There was about a forty-five day gap period between applying for it and receiving it. And then following which the applicant proceeded to complete their compliance plans. I will say that we, in this case. Came very close, you know, and while we put in our request, the hundred eighty to ninety days, and obviously we're beyond that now because of the. The time to get scheduled to discuss this. But in reality, it was the period during that planning board from the county. Review, because we actually did get the complying compliance, in this case, materials in. Before the end of that period from our engineer to start the review, but it was not enough time to. Get the review completed, have or get deeds backed and signed by that time period. So when we realized that, we put the request in. But ultimately, if you were to take that time period. That the county took and that we were pursuing that and actually did have our our engineer. Provide the compliance materials about two weeks before the end of that period. That if if that intervening middle part had been shorter, we would likely have had the the time and ultimately that would be. Respectfully, ultimately, the request, the compliance materials are done. And if the board was so inclined, rather than having us come back, or likely in this case, it would be the applicant. I would say abandon the project, but doing something different rather than. This particular project because of the the time involved, but but ultimately. That shorter period, if it were to be, as as Mr. Lesko said, kind of concatenated with. The time to get to you here tonight is really what the request is. The compliance materials are. Had been prepared and and ready to go. It should be a very limited time to finalize the the review of that so that it can be signed and then recorded.
Mr. Cohen has a question?
Yeah, so I I sort of feel like Ryan did answer my question, but I want to confirm that I understood him correctly. So just referring back to what Justin told us. The length of the extension we're allowed to grant. Has to coincide with the delays that the applicant experienced. And what I'm hearing is that there was a forty-five day or so delay with the county. And then the rest of the delay is the delay with Princeton. Getting you guys onto an agenda between when the application was received, say, March twenty-sixth until today. So the it's forty-five days plus whatever the distance is between March twenty-sixth and today. Is that? The intention that you're asking for?
It is. I'll say that our our initial request, you know, kind of oversimplified. Many other towns treat these differently than this. And but yes, that is that is the amount of time needed and essentially the justification that could be made for this extension.
Okay, and then that extension, whatever that number of days is, would be. From the twenty-fifth of March. Not from today. That's how the. It will be calculated.
Assuming assuming if that extension period was the that initial delay period plus this time between the request and now, yes, that would be the request. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Justin.
I'd just like to respond to that. We received the quest, the request for the extension on March twenty-sixth. And the filing deadline was March twenty-eighth. So it was never going to get on an agenda before it expired. You know, and then the holdup from March twenty-eighth to now. We were asking for escrow and there were periods where we didn't have any responses back and, you know, it unfortunately, this. I don't think this is the intention, but. If with those dates and those timeframes, the applicant ends up getting, you know, an extra. Four months for something that they were supposed to do within a hundred and ninety days. I mean, I it it pains me from a self-interest side to say this. Because I don't think it necessarily, you know, a lot of work went into these applications. As you all remember, the multiple meetings and all that. I I don't want to relive that, you know, from a self-interest side. But from a MLUL side and a, you know, legal side and a fairness to to everyone else. You know, this just does not seem like a a timeline. That we necessarily want to to start, you know, making a precedent. And that's just my.
If I just add briefly to that. Prior to requesting the extension, we did ask what the process was. The the request for an escrow is. New to the process, it wasn't necessarily part of what we explored and and. I'll also say it was a difficult decision rather to even pursue the extension, to be honest with you. And a lot of thought went into both in the scheduling and whether that money really made sense to even put out. To to try. Ultimately, the applicant decided to do that. But but it is a challenging question, particularly in a situation where this one where. It was right at the end and and ready to go and and, you know, maybe shame on us for not pushing. Harder on those last couple of days. Justin, I do appreciate you. You were very helpful in attempts to, you know, get something to the the county at that last period. But ultimately, it it didn't happen and then the applicant has a very tough choice to make, whether to sink money further into it or. And and ultimately to kind of wait for this to to ask, so.
All right, thank you for that. Thank you both. Mark Frida?
Oh, I'm just curious, when did the applicant? Apply to the county planning board? When was the county hearing? And how long after the hearing was their approval or was their approval the same night?
I I'd have to pull up the exact dates, Mayor, but early. Early November and then mid-December. The the way they do their approvals is. I don't mean to say in secret, they're public meetings, but ultimately they're not like this, and then you get a letter back ultimately. So I I approximately forty-five days.
So the so the applicant waited about eight months after our approval to apply to the county?
No, no, no. The 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 resolution was in.
March?
September.
Our resolution was in September?
It it was. There was quite a bit of time, unfortunately, between the approval and the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to interject. It was scheduled for the December eleventh meeting before the county planning board.
My memory was close. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Jack Taylor?
Yeah, Mr. Ryan, I'm confused. On three occasions, we've talked about the extension. And in each and every one, I had the impression that there was, if not ambivalence. That it was a very difficult decision and that if there had not been an extension. Then the process would have changed and the program wouldn't have gone forward. In other words, from my perspective, I don't understand the nature of expansion, extension. Your reaction to it and whether it matters what decision we're taking here or not to the applicant.
That that a very fair question and and. Essentially, with an extension like this, the applicant would proceed as approved by this board. If not. They had the option to reapply and and there might be some reverse res judicata. And ultimately, this board approved it and, you know, if the board were to be presented with the same application without any changes in zoning to the master plan, I. Would have some concerns about it being denied. But but ultimately, in this particular case, I would represent though that. The time to do that is 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 one that's just not. Doesn't fit this applicant and and he would proceed to do something else. He would build. I I don't want to get into the details of the original debate or discussion about this application. But it was a minor subdivision with variances to allow two smaller homes to be built. Versus the as of right, much larger home. And I'm not here to suggest, you know. Revisiting which the board thinks is better, but ultimately. That would likely be the outcome, that they would not invest more in in another, say, six months pursuing. That original application to be re-approved and and go with an as of right option. That's the reality of what what happened in this one.
So in other words, it really is up to the board to decide whether the applicant goes forward.
It's up to us to decide whether they got an extension.
Yeah. Yes.
And then they can and then they can. Still do either plan, but if we don't give the extension, then they have to reapply and go through the all the whole. Process all over again, which clearly. You know, not many people would want to do. Yeah, does that answer your question, Jack?
Yeah, I understand. Thank you, Louise.
David Cohen?
Yeah. The nature of my question before, when I was asking for the length of the extension. You know, I did not mean to suggest in any way that our staff was remiss. In allowing time to pass between when the extension application was received. And when we as a board are hearing this. Rather, what I think the applicant is asking for is just as a matter of. Practicality. That time period between March twenty-sixth and today must be added to the extension. In order for them to be able to file the the paperwork that was almost ready. But but in reality, the only extension they're really asking for is the length of time it took. For the county planning board to process their application. Now, there may be a legitimate argument that. The ninety, one hundred and ninety day time period allowed for plenty of time. For the planning board to do their, the county planning board to do their work and for the applicant to file the plat. And Mr. Kenny is representing that they did almost complete it. So, you know, he actually, you know, he might only be asking for. The period of time between March twenty-sixth and today. Plus a week. You know, I mean, we don't know exactly how long it'll take them to submit the plat at this point. But the the question that I'm asking, I guess, is we do not want to be in a situation where we grant the extension. And are challenged in court as having done so improperly. And so I was asking, how do you calculate the extension and is a delay? By Princeton's planning staff in processing the application, a legitimate delay? Not, again, not casting blame or aspersions, but just saying if we wanted to grant this. Would we be safe in granting it? From from legal challenge? Maybe this is a question for Jerry.
It is a question, Jerry, I I think, and and thanks for asking it, Jerry.
I think granting it would be highly problematic.
Did you, did you, I I usually try to read your lips and I can't see them, so. Did you say highly problematic?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the way I see it. Give us, give us your legal reason.
Explain, yeah.
Well. What 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 was the delay? I I during this one hundred and ninety day period. They had plenty of time to get it in to the county planning board. The county planning board acted within a couple of months. And. Then all I had to do was file a plat or they didn't have to get. Compliance stuff before approved by this by the staff. Then they just filed a plat or deeds. And what does it take to to prepare the deeds?
Just just to, we would we would not have been able to file the deed. They need to be approved by staff and 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 signed. Before they can be approved. So we we did have to go through that compliance process.
No, I don't I don't agree with that.
We could have, we could have filed deeds without the.
No, no, but the rest of compliance in terms of satisfaction of conditions. Modifications of of the plan, et cetera.
I'll 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 defer to to staff here if they would have released them. Prior to the other conditions being satisfied, I would. Love that. I I don't I don't believe that's the case, but.
That that seems like a bit of a kind of redirect right now, to be honest with you. I think the real question is. Could you have filed a plat between December eleventh or or can you, could you have filed all those compliance materials? Between December eleventh and then gotten it. Prepared and ready to go to file it completely with the county by March twenty twenty eighth. And I mean, that's two and a half months there. That that seems realistic, three and a half months.
And I interject here, I'm sorry. We received the deed descriptions and the revised plans on March twenty-first. Then we got the formal request in writing on the twenty-sixth. That's all.
Okay, thanks, Carrie.
Carrie, do you need to swear, carry in for this?
You're suddenly got difficulty here, Justin.
Yes, it is want to do.
Sorry about that. I was just, I was just asking if Jared, do you need to retroactively swear, carry in for that information or is that not testimony?
Yeah, no, it's it's not testimony.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask a question, Jerry?
Yes, please.
Clarify, what is the the legal issue with granting the extension? Or what where's where does the legal liability lie for? The board, if we were to grant the extension?
Well, the applicant has one hundred and ninety days. If they don't do it within a hundred and ninety days, they're gonna have to explain why they didn't do it. Why there was a delay. Cause the delay, the length of the delay. And there would be entitled in that case, if that was, if that was all legitimate. For an extension during the time period of the delay. And I just don't see the proofs on that.
Okay. But the fact is that they were delayed. So.
Where were they delayed?
Well.
It was an approval by the county planning board in mid-December. That he could have prepared a plat or or deeds. In fact, they.
So is it up to us to question the reason why they were delayed?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, I mean, that's what the, that's what the municipal land use law says, that the. Yeah, there has to be a direct correlation between. The. The amount of. The the time that they were delayed and the. And that the any extension we. Grant needs to equal the delay. And what and I I have to say, I'm I'm still a little confused. Also about. You know, if that, I mean, if you were delayed by the county, but they but. But they gave their approval in mid-December, then you had until mid-March. Is that, is that correct? And your your testimony is that or your, it's not sworn because you don't get sworn, but. Is that there was no way for you to to file your. You know, the the required documents in those four months?
The the representation was that it was done first by by email to the board and managed the the engineer for doing that and then. Directly to staff prior to the to the deadline. Could have been done faster, of course. Do I wish it had been? Yes. Do I, did we do everything we could to to have things line up? Yes, ultimately, that's the reality of of trying to get these things completed. In in time and and the the necessity to tie it to a period. Is is or to a period of of an outside approval is 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 the task here. I I I understand what some of you are saying. It's 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 our job to to try to avoid the duplication of another application and the repercussions of this by by. You know, explaining it as I am. I don't disagree with what some of the board members are saying necessarily. In the regular course, many of these types of applications, they can be done. I'll say it is getting harder and harder. To to do so on a on a general basis and ultimately. In this case, it came quite close, and if you were to add up the time between that last submission. And which, you know, could, I I don't think it was, I'll I'll be totally honest, it would not be fair to expect. um, staff to turn around in three days or five days or even a, a week. That's, that's, um, it's not. But if you were to add those periods up with the, the time for the, the county, that, that is, um, um, something that the MLUL at least recognizes. And that's what we're, that's what we're, we're asking for. Um, and certainly, you know, I understand.
Okay. Uh, David?
So, one question I have is whether there is such a thing as a minor subdivision that would not have to be reviewed by the county planning board? Because one of the key factors here seems to be whether the forty-five days that the county took to process this application should count toward an extension. And if the hundred and ninety days that's contemplated in the MLUL for filing the plat, uh, just, you know, wouldn't necessarily include county planning board review because that only happens in some cases? Then I would think it's reasonable to give an extension for the amount of time it took for the county to process it, even if the applicant could have completed the application in the remaining three months, three and a half months, or whatever. But if every single minor site plan, a minor, uh, subdivision has to go to the county planning board, then I would think that the one hundred and ninety days would would contemplate that process of going to the county planning board as part of the hundred and ninety days. And therefore, unless the county took an inordinate amount of time, then the, took, the time that the county took would not be grounds for an extension, if I'm being clear. So.
Yeah, no, that, that is surprisingly clear. Um.
So does anyone know?
Jerry, do you know the answer to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I believe every subdivision of land goes to the county planning board. Only some site plans do. And Jerry, you could correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that's my belief.
I, I don't.
You said not every?
Uh, no, every subdivision, but not every site plan.
Every subdivision, but not every site plan. Okay. Jerry and then Dan Weissman?
Well, I'll defer to Dan.
Sure. I, I don't think I've been sworn in, uh, for this yet.
So, swear or affirm testimony about to go be the truth.
I do.
Just one more firm.
Uh, the Mercer County Land, uh, Development Ordinance requires that any subdivision of land within Mercer County go to the Mercer County Planning Board.
Okay.
But this hundred and ninety days is established by the state, not by the county.
Correct.
Yeah. And we don't know whether that's true in every county.
Correct. I can't speak to other counties. I can, I, I'm only familiar with the Mercer County, uh, Land Development Ordinance.
Thanks. Mr. O'Donnell?
My issue is though, that we still don't know what the reason was for the delay.
Yeah.
From the county planning board's approval to the March 26th date where they asked for an extension.
Yeah, I think that's the key factual question.
I, I agree, Owen. That's, that's the question.
Yeah, I'll just represent that once it's approved, then, then the materials are updated, uh, in conformance with that, uh, to, to be resubmitted as a uh, final compliance package. Um, so there's, there's work to be done. Uh, I, I don't have our engineer for this case on here tonight, so I can be more specific than that. But I will say, you know, can it, can it, and often, is it done in that period of time? Yes. It, it can. Um, uh, is it in the normal course to for it to, to take the long, unfortunately, that's become my experience. Um, but, but, uh, to your point, that, that there's no specific other than, uh, it taking longer for the engineer to get that, um, to explain that additional period beyond the part where it was in the county's hands.
Well, um, I, you know, I'm hearing as others have, Mr. Mueller say that under these circumstances, um, granting an extension uh, would be very problematic and would and would, um, expose the board and the town to, you know, some jeopardy. And it pains me to say that because I would prefer to see two, two smaller houses on smaller lots that even though they're, you know, just a little smaller than is allowed in the zone, uh, than, than a gigantic, uh, you know, truly, truly large house right on a corner there. Um, but that's not the question that's before us. The, you know, it's a much more technical kind of question that, um, and, and I think it's our responsibility to avoid that jeopardy on behalf of the town, unfortunately. Or I mean, I don't mean unfortunately, I mean, unfortunately for the applicant, I guess is what I mean. Um, I, I don't know. Do other, other folks want to weigh in with some thoughts about this? Um, Freddie Pearl Mutter and then David Cohen?
Um, I have a question for Jerry. If if this were an illegal act, et cetera, whatever, who would be the likely plaintiff in that? Who would go out, you know, is, is it another landowner? Is it, who are we worried about being sued by if we are really worried about being sued?
If we, if we granted it?
Yeah.
It would be neighboring property owner, I'd expect.
And just to, just to add to that, I mean, the first thing that we see in every lawsuit is a process argument, whether it's there or not.
Yeah.
Uh, David, did you have something else?
Yeah, I just wanna, um, make one last, um, observation in the applicant's favor, which is that the approval that we did grant was quite complicated. We heard there were seventeen conditions, I think.
Yeah.
Um, there was a fair amount of compliance work for the engineer to do to update their plans. And I don't think the standard here is was the filing of the plat pursued with all possible haste. You know, it wasn't done with due diligence. And, you know, it feels to me like, you know, they were trying reasonably hard. Uh, you know, I don't know how busy the engineer was, how many other projects he had going on, how many staff he had available, you know, there. As a design professional myself, I have some sympathy for, um, you know, an inability to turn around documents very quickly. But, um, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna push it. Uh, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Um, Mr. Mueller, um, given what Mr. Cohen just said, do you, does that give you any, any higher comfort level with, um, uh, because I, I find, you know, I'm sympathetic to that argument as well. Um, I just, you know, I want to know what you think about it.
Yeah, no, to tell you the truth, not really. Uh,
Okay.
It, it seems to me that the, if you don't want to do a plat, you can do it by deeds. The deeds can be prepared. It doesn't take much time. And I'm not sure what sign off the, the staff has to give with respect to the deeds. They could be prepared. It's a deed from the applicant to the applicant. Um, and, uh, they could be filed, they, they could be prepared in days.
Okay, okay.
Um.
Justin, do you have any comments?
No, no, I don't.
I- i- if, if I may just, just ask one question, though, it, and, and this is perhaps my misunderstanding is to, to confirm with Princeton's process, but well, when these packages are submitted, would the deeds be released with signatures, um, to, to, um, to the chair and secretary to sign without those, um, compliance items being approved, um, by staff? It's my understanding that they don't, um, and that, that those, the compliance items need to be completed. And I guess we'd just like clarification on that.
Yeah.
Well, y- yes, and I see Dan putting his camera on because he oversees these, um, so I'll, I'll defer to Dan.
Sure, thank you. Um, so if, when it comes to filing by plat, we would ensure that all compliance items, uh, would be met. If it's filing by deed, the only thing that we would, uh, call for compliance on is that the deed documents be reviewed by Mr. Mueller and the deed descriptions of the lot be reviewed by our, um, land surveying consultant, uh, to ensure that the deed descriptions match what, what the subdivision plan, uh, indicated the subdivision was for. So those would really be the two compliance items of filing by, by deed.
I'll, I'll speak as a practitioner that I'm, I'm from a going forward basis, delighted to hear that. Um, I, um, my experience had been that these are all put together and that there would not be a, a deed released abs- absence compliance. So I'm, I'm, I'm glad to hear that that's the case and will be in the future, sending you deeds, uh, you know, immediately since, as Mr. Mr. Mueller said, those are quite simple to put together. It is the remaining parts of these projects that are quite complicated. Um, and I, I'm, I'm surprised to hear that we would receive a deed with legal descriptions if the other notes on the subdivision plan had not been adjusted to staff's compliance, um, or satisfaction before those could be released. But I guess happy to hear that on a going forward basis.
I'm sorry. Are, are you suggesting that we review it? And then if you don't make the changes that, that the two, that either Jerry or the land surveyor have, then you'd still be able to file? Because I don't think that's what we're saying. It's, you know, there's the normal compliance for a plat that we, we always have. And the compliance for a deed is, is, it's still being reviewed, as Dan just mentioned.
But, but reviewed as to the text of the deed and the, uh, meets and bounds description is what I'm hearing. And that the other items that take a certain period of time, uh, you know, the, the, uh, the, you know, I'll call it, it's not filed as a map, but it's still required and, and reviewed, that those are not necessary, and that those deeds would be released if, uh, upon submission of a, a, a form deed and descriptions, um, for review. Um, so I, I, I wasn't aware of that that would work that way. I, I'm, I'm, I'm doubtful that, honestly, that, that it does. But if, if it does, then that, that's a lot of things to shortcut. And I guess at some other point, the, the other documents would be reviewed for condition compliance, I suppose.
But I, I don't think it obviates the need to submit a, a compli- whatever compliance materials need to be submitted.
But that, that the subdivision could be perfected prior to that occurring?
Yeah. And Dan, you agree?
Okay, let's, um, I, I mean, I think that that's a simple yes. Um, Pallavi?
Um, thanks. So I, I mean, this exchange is kind of clarifying the reason for the delay, which is deep and profound confusion about the process. Um, and we have two lawyers who have both been working in the field and they seem to have had different understandings. Um, so, I mean, in all fairness to the applicant, we spent so much time working with them, um, in reviewing these plans. Um, and I, you know, as a planning board member, this is a project that we definitely, um, want to see going forward. Um, I'm wondering if Jerry, the, uh, you would accept a reason for delay as, as misunderstanding, um, or of the process? A lot is. Is that allowed?
It's a good question. Um. I think it's tenuous, but, uh, if that's the board's pleasure, I, um, I think it can go ahead with that, but, um.
Another point is also, this is the first project of this kind we've seen in town. Um, and it's a learning experience, um, for both the applicant and for the administration. Um, and for our board.
Uh, is it the first?
It's not.
Project of its kind? I mean, I, I.
David.
Yeah, I, I, I don't mean to, um.
Respect the board, maybe thinking of the, the next one we'll be discussing, to be honest with you, that, that may be.
Okay.
Yeah, the next one, yeah, the next one was sort of a one of a kind, uh, kind of thing. Um.
But Justin, prior, prior to what's before the board tonight, um, there, there were minor subdivisions that were approved by the, uh, by the board, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, frankly, they're, they're minor. I don't think we notice them too much because it's one lots, two lots, or it's two lot, lot line adjustments.
Yeah, and.
You know?
No one's ever come in, I, I don't think for an extension of the time for filing the deeds or plat, have they?
Not that I can recall, uh, in the couple of years I've been here.
Me too.
Uh, Mayor Frida?
I would say lack of confuse, lack of or confusion as to what the proper process is, isn't really a legal excuse. But anyway, I make a motion to deny.
Is, uh, there's a motion on the floor, so to speak? Is there a second?
Second.
Was that you, Mr. McGowan?
It was.
Two people spoke at once on my screen. Freaked out. Um, okay, then let's, uh, call the roll. Kerry?
Uh, Mr. Badekheimer?
Deny.
Ms. Capazola?
So that's a yes. If you're voting yes, it's to say no.
Yeah.
Um, yes.
Kerry, we're not hearing you right now. Are you?
I'm sorry, I had my mic in the wrong position.
Okay, okay. We got Ju- not, Nat and Julie voted.
Mr. Cohen?
No.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
No.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Reluctantly, yes.
Okay, the motion to not, to deny has been carried.
Okay, thank you. So, um, this is much later than we most usually go without a break. Um, I'm going to ask if the remaining three items, if there's any reason to think that any of them will take as long as the discussion that we just had. If they will, and I, I'm asking this question not out of you, Mr. Kennedy, with respect, uh, but of Mr. Lesko, um, then, then I would like to take a break now. And if you think there, they were, are likely to go more quickly, then I am willing to uh, forge ahead.
Uh, because there are three, I wouldn't imagine cumulatively, it'd be less than a half hour. So I, I, I could use a bathroom break.
Okay, let's make it a, let's make it a brief one, though. It's nine forty-eight. Let's be back by, say, five minutes to, to ten. So seven minute break. Thanks. Well, six minutes now. Okay. Okay, welcome back, everybody. If you are within hearing, please, uh, turn your cameras back on. Thank you. Board members, anyway, we'll wait a minute for David and for Jack and Freddie. There's David. Oh, and Pallavi, too. Okay. I think we're all here. So we'll, um, reconvene them.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. The next item on the agenda is, um, eight C. This is Princeton Developers, formerly Iodale. This was a minor subdivision. They're asking for an extension of time. The approval was granted September nineteen, twenty twenty-four. This is at four sixty-nine Ewing Street. File number P, twenty-three, twenty-two dash two-five-five M S. Um, Justin?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Justin, if you raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony about to go be the truth.
Yes, I do.
Just one informed.
Thank you. Uh, the next request to extend the period to file a subdivision is at four sixty-nine Ewing Street. Uh, you may know this application as the Iodale one. Um, that applicant has since sold the lot to the applicant that the chair just mentioned. Four sixty-nine Ewing Street Property Developers LLC, who are bringing this, uh, forth tonight. The original, the approved application, I should say, was for a one lots, two lots subdivision. Variances were approved to allow for two point two-two acre lots, where point two-five acres is the minimum lot size of the R six zone. Additional approved variances. Additional approved variances on the subdivision included those for lot width and lot frontage. Um an associated site plan was approved alongside the subdivision application to allow for a primary dwelling and an accessory dwelling unit on each lot uh sharing a driveway. The deadline to file the subdivision was March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, and we received a request for an extension on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Uh the only other governmental approval for the subdivision was from the Mercer County Planning Board, and the applicant received that on June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Uh the applicant, these are the comments from from my memo. The applicant should advise when they applied for county planning board approval and if it created a delay in filing the subdivision. Uh the applicant also stated that this is a project due to the site plan approval. Um they should elaborate on how that affects the filing of the minor subdivision plat or deed. Uh you may remember, a condition was specifically crafted to allow the applicant to perfect the subdivision while the existing house was still there as long as they demolished that house prior to the two lots being sold separately. Um I do also want to note that the applicant provided some compliance documents for both the site plan and subdivision earlier this month. Uh some of the documents related to the subdivision are dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, uh which is obviously after the March twenty-eighth deadline. Um and just lastly, the applicant has requested in their letter a one hundred and eighty day extension to file the subdivision. Uh with that said, I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair, or to the applicant.
Um I'll turn to you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Um if if it's possible, I I do have our engineer, um Jim Kamalik in the audience. We could bring him over just to to assist with with going through some of the timeline um um of of this one as it as it was quite, I'll say complicated as as he's coming over. I'll 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 start by saying, you know, not to rehash the the same discussion arguments we had before, but to kind of pick up on a couple of the themes that we discussed that makes this one particularly different. Um uh piece one, um uh and this a bit goes to the um uh the the process here, but is additionally a site plan. Uh site plans have two years, as you heard with the the extension before, uh of vesting and uh orders of magnitude, more complexity of 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 uh preparation and compliance to go through. Um uh but actually, before I continue, I mean, I don't say, should I? Should we have Jim sworn in? We'll be providing some testimony.
Yeah, Jim, if you could raise your right hand.
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
That's one of them. Please say your full names, spell your last name, and give, that's that's sufficient.
James Kamelak, C H M I E L A K.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So um give a couple of things just to start. So um not only that this compliance material has been submitted, but all the outside agency um approvals have been obtained on this one. Is that correct? Including the?
Yes. Yes, we have received those approvals.
All right, and again, I guess different than the last one, but could we focus a bit on the the types of things that needed to happen before um county approval could be sought and why this was so much more complicated than a standard minor subdivision?
Well, I think if everybody remembers, um this was a site plan application, and I think the prominent driver of this approval was driven by the fact that um they were two residential lots with a shared driveway as well as a shared corridor for utilities. And then also the trees were of subsequent interest um buffering from ne- neighboring properties. So the site from a landscaping perspective, um to respect the the adjacent properties and local neighborhood, really weighed heavily in on that site plan as well. Um and then we also had some uh stormwater management component, which was part of this approval, um which was also serving to address the increase um in impervious area on the site, but also handled um for the overall site plan or the two lots as a whole. So um where typically for a minor subdivision, uh you may have two individual lots um where you don't have a final design and a site plan component, and you can simply go into the county, get your approval rather quickly. Um because of the the lack of detail here, we did have a site plan component, um which we had, you know, other significant issues that we addressed with the board, um which manifested itself in approximately twenty-five conditions in that resolution of approval um that we worked to satisfy. Um and then as part of our application to the outside agencies, um our approach was to submit those compliance plans, which included the final site plan as well, in addition to the minor subdivision plan as a complete package in its final form to all of the outside agencies. So they were approving the final thing. Um and we we didn't, you know, make those submissions. Uh and we also followed up with that submission simultaneously to the municipality as well um for their approval of those resolutions, um resolution compliance phase of which we we um. Actually, that was that was after the fact because we received those approvals from those agencies. But we have all of the approvals in hand at this point in time. The compliance documents are are complete and, you know, satisfactory from our standpoint with working through the issues of, as I explained, the the easements on both lots for the shared driveway, for the shared drainage, the stormwater maintenance plan. We also um had to go down a path relative to preparing a site-specific landscaping plan um relative to this property, which is somewhat unique for two residential lots, which you typically would not have. Um and that was a unique component of sort of the the tree removal uh component and the tree buffering relative to the sensitivities of the neighboring property owners, which we did have, we memorialized those concepts on our site plan, um but have since retained a landscape architect to prepare that site-specific plan, which has been submitted, you know, to the town as one of those components of the resolution of approval. So um I know that's a lot, but, you know, just to refresh your memory, I think a lot of us remember this application. It was it was rather unique. Um. We also held that impervious coverage to that thirty-six percent, not that forty-nine point five relative to the zoning. So we kept it on the lower side, if you remember, but all of these different facets, um you know, drove us to to sort of managing the overall timeframe with other complexities of, you know, the prior owner and now the current owner, which also played into this um in terms of, you know, the sequencing of our timing uh with where we're at today. But I guess just to summarize, we have everything we need. Um, you know, and if there are no further comments on municipal review, we should be able to this right to the next step if the board were to grant this, you know, approval um for time tonight.
Jim, one one follow-up question. Um this was a complex project. It happened to slide in as a minor subdivision. Uh it was also a site plan. If it were major and had a different fee, would that hundred ninety days be um an issue here?
No, I think the one hundred ninety days is really limited to that minor site plan. So we would have, obviously, the site plan has not expired. That's still valid. But we are hamstrung because of this classification of a a minor subdivision, as you pointed out.
Thank you.
Uh Mr. Cohen, thanks, Mr. Mr. Kamelak. Um.
Yeah, I I just want to say I find it very convincing that the applicant has been working diligently ever since they, you know, received the approvals and that there was just. I I mean, maybe it was possible for them to file the plat before they did all the other compliance stuff. But it sounds like uh not only the letter, but the spirit of the MLUL is that they need needed to be working diligently towards it, and it sounds like they have been doing that. And that that there were a lot of other governmental approvals that contributed to the delay. Um not, you know, not just the county planning board. So I think that it fits right, you know, comfortably into the MLUL uh requirements for the extension.
Yep, thank you for, thank you for that. Other um other comments or thoughts from board members? Would someone like to make a motion? Mr. Cohen?
I move to grant the extension.
Uh we'll just also need to, we'll we'll need to know the amount of time as well, based on the delays.
So since they're representing that they're just about ready at this point, uh I think from March twenty-fifth till July twenty-fifth, that's four months, would be about a hundred and twenty days. Um so I would give a little bit of uh wiggle room. So maybe a hundred and fifty day extension would be what I would move.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Ms. Capizoli. Um Mr. Kennedy, you have a question?
Just a point of order. Um uh since I know that's it's um not the regular practice. Um uh these are not common in in Princeton, or as common as they are in other municipalities. Just want to add just a procedural question here. If we were to expect a resolution um that might be necessary to include with the deed, um is it necessary to to include that time in now? If if this is approved on the record?
Good question.
I'm comfortable with that, but if we were to expect this to be memorialized, I just want to. And I'll say in other municipalities, I would include um the extension resolution in with the deeds when they're recorded so that the county clerk understands that it's been uh why there's been more than a hundred ninety days.
Yeah, fair. Um Mr. Muller or or are you the right person to address that question?
Is it, uh Ryan, is the thought add an additional period of time?
Just i- i- yes, if 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 Mr. Cohen's motion is, I I believe, another thirty or so days to complete, to get the deeds signed and and filed. My concern would be that, again, as a practice in some other municipalities and their extensions, it'd be accompanied by a resolution. Um and um I I it's ultimately a county issue to look at the timing of the resolution and the one ninety days.
Yeah, we would not have a resolution until, you know, um at the earliest our September, our our first September meeting. So an additional thirty days would not be enough.
So if if possible, it it may be legally permissible to do that. It hasn't been my practice. I've always used uh a a resolution in with the deed that may not be necessary, but I would just ask if it's possible to get to that um resolution date as well, if if that is necessary to have this memorialized.
Do you know whether it's necessary, Mr. Muller, or is that a county by county decision?
I think it's county by county, but I I I think Ryan's point is a good one, and I could see a lot that a lot of these kind of recording offices, they're very piggyhewn. Um and I think having that would, if if there were issues, I would want it.
Yeah, so um.
Grant the request at a hundred and eighty days, then.
Which takes it through to September, what? Do we?
The original deadline was the twenty-sixth, March twenty-sixth?
The twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth would take it to September twenty-fourth.
Okay, that works.
Thank you. Um much much appreciated, just that clarification.
I mean, that gives us both both September meetings. I think that's fair, more than fair. Okay. Um so Mr. Cohen, you're amending your motion.
Hundred and eighty days, yeah.
And um Mr. O'Donnell, you seconded, is that correct?
I think Julie did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Julie.
Sorry, I I amend my second.
Okay. Um Carrie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Badakheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um next item is eight D. This is Steven Wasco, Minor Subdivision Extension of Time. Approval was granted December nineteen twenty twenty-four. This is at five sixty-one and five thirty-seven Stockton Street, file number P twenty twenty-three twenty-three dash three-six-eight-eight M S. Um, Mr. Lesko, he's got his hand up. Go ahead, Jerry.
You swear or affirm testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
That's one of them.
Thank you. Uh thank you, Madam Chair. The next two requests are going to be slightly different than the two that you just saw because they're both on state roads. So they do require permissions from the New Jersey Department of Transportation in addition to their county planning board approval. Uh this request before you is for a lot line adjustment between two neighbors at five thirty-seven and five sixty-one Stockton Street, which is, of course, also Route two oh six. Uh each lot contains a a house that that was built in the early eighteenth century. And this lot line adjustment was approved to allow for the one at five sixty-one Stockton Street to be moved further away from the Stony Brook, so it does not flood again, uh just as a reminder of this one. Several variances were requested and granted by the board. Uh the deadline to file the subdivision was June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the applicant sent in their extension request prior to that date on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh the applicant states that the state DOT is still reviewing the project for consistency with its highway access code and right-of-way dedication standards. Uh again, comments from the report, the applicant should state if that review has been completed uh since they sent the letter, and if so, how long the delay was. Um it should be noted that the applicant did provide many additional documents since the board's approval, including deeds, easement agreements, legal descriptions, all those compliance materials that we would normally uh receive. Um and again, the applicant requested a blanket hundred and eighty day extension to file the subdivision.
All right, thank you. Ryan, Kennedy?
Justin, um um I'll I'll be brief on this one. Um it it has both the complexity of the prior one and unfortunately, we are still waiting for these outside approvals on Friday. We did get comments back. They were not the type of comments that um I'd like to speak about publicly um states in that. And um uh more, I say more work that I don't think is necessary needs to be done. Um we actually did already resubmit um to the state. Uh the concern I have with this one, you know, there are two options um under the MLU for extensions. One is to ask, you know, before you're over, and one is to ask after you get your final approvals. I'm I'm almost hesitant to add, I mean, I guess we'd have to come back if they continue to take an inordinate amount of time. Uh I I would reiterate, I suppose, our initial request, you know, of a hundred eighty days and hope that's enough. Um I I'm afraid that, you know, their process does restart their own clock. Um when we submitted all of our compliance materials, they were already past the time when they were supposed to have looked at it. Um and this, this is, I think, your your classic, um, you know, that we just waiting for the the state, un- unfortunately. Um so with that, I I guess I I'd reiterate, I guess, our original hundred eighty days and and hope that I'm not back here again asking for another one.
Okay. Um any follow-up questions from board members? And if there are none, would someone like to make a motion?
Well, I will. I feel so bad for Steve. He's in a really tough spot. And, you know, we should do whatever we can to help. Um this is climate change. It's rough.
Yeah.
So.
We should be grateful to the state. They're making us look good.
Get your second motion.
Thank you, Julie and uh and Owen for seconding.
I think they have seconded.
Yeah, they could. They could put that on the side of their building, I think. Um. Uh Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Badakheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next up, we have Elka Patel Panu. This is a minor subdivision. Um request for an extension of time. This is an approve, the approval for this was granted uh September nineteen twenty twenty-four. This is at ten eighty-two Princeton Kingston Road, file P twenty-three twenty-three three-six-nine M S. Mr. Lesko, Jerry, would you do the honors?
Do you swear or affirm testimony about to give me the truth?
Yes, I do.
That's one of them.
Thank you. Uh this last request is at ten eighty-two Princeton Kingston Road, which is also Route twenty-seven. Uh this is also for a lot line adjustment between neighbors. Uh the approval Uh, the approval made the applicant's lot a complying flag lot when it previously was not complying. No variances were needed, uh, at the time. The deadline to file the subdivision was March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, and we received a request for an extension on July second, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, similar to the last one, the applicant states that the state DOT is still reviewing the project for consistency with the highway access code and right-of-way dedication standards. Um, and again, the applicant should state if that review has been completed, and if so, how long the delay was. Um, and the applicant has requested a blanket hundred and eighty day extension to file the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
I'll, I'll be quick. Very similar to the last application. It's the same set of engineers. Um, I'll just add, um, we have not, I don't have comments on this one yet, but we've decided because the types of submission from the same engineers were the same, and we received comments on the other application that we're gonna be submitting revised just proactively, um, because we're expect, we don't wanna wait for more comments that unfortunately, um, that will be the same forms that our other engineer, our engineer, same engineer did on the, the Wasco project. So, uh, uh, this one was, was requested later, because a- again, we weren't um, I'm still not sure when we're gonna get it, um, and, um, I'm hesitant to suggest that we won't be back. I, I really hope, I'll just other one other addition here. I know, um, we're all, uh, and appreciate the comments on Mr. Wesco's situation. I'll, I'll note this one um, is, is kind of a joint effort. I would say the town is not assisting with this, but there's a um, a, a historic property here that, um, everyone will be very happy when we can close and, um, uh, uh, fund a, a restoration that is part of this, um, application on behalf of the municipality. But that, though, it's, it's essentially the same as the, what we just heard with Wesco.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, any other questions, comments about this? And if not, would someone like to?
There's a hand up, there's a hand up in the, the
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, um, hmm, we uh, this is not a public hearing, per se, um, uh, but I have no objection to, um, bringing the person identified as Jones over for, um, you know, maybe they have a quick question or a quick comment. Mr. Henderson, um, could you bring over the person identified as Jones? There we go.
Hello, um, we just had a quick question.
You need to be sworn in, um, if you're gonna address the board. Sorry, Mr. Mueller?
You swear or affirm testimony about to give me the truth?
I do.
They say your full name and give your, uh, give you a street.
Uh, Michael Jones, uh, ten ninety-one Princeton Kingston Road.
Hi, Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Hey, uh, you had mentioned there's a historical, you know, uh, component to it. Um, we live across the street. We're in the Kingston Mill Historic Property District. And I was just kind of curious what the component part of the uh,
Sure.
subdivision was.
So, um, I, I'll, I'm being choosing my words carefully here, but, but ultimately, this, um, the parcel that we're talking about was an existing lot um, that was part of a preserved farm with a historic, um, built historic home on it. As, as been overall, uh, arrangement with the municipality. When this lot is sold to, to my client, uh, the funds will become available to continue the, uh, historic restoration of that building. So there's actually nothing on the lot that we're talking about. Uh, my client's going to build a house that will be subject to historic review in the district, but the, with, by an arrangement with the municipality, the funds from this sale um, uh, are part of an arrangement, uh, with Princeton to fund and complete a historic restoration of, of a farmstead, um, essentially next door to the lot that we're talking about.
Right, so the Gillic property has been going under those restorations for over two decades? And I'm just kind of curious as to how those funds are gonna be allocated to making that happen, cause the
I'm sorry to interrupt, but can, can you all have this conversation offline? Maybe you can um, contact each other, you know,
Sure.
Google him or something, because thi- this is a this falls under the category of a matter that is not what's before us right now. We have to, you know, our, our decision has to do with whether they've made a certain compelling argument based on a timeframe that they can prove, and I'm not trying to um,
Yeah, I understand.
Down the conversation. I just don't want the, to, you know, to take up the board's time with something that is just not, not part of what's in front of us right here, right now.
I, I've been on the call for over three hours waiting for this. So I just wanted to have a better understanding of what those funds were going to incorporate. I mean, and it's, it's associated with what you guys are doing from a board perspective, but, you know, uh, uh, that's fine. I'm happy to have that conversation offline.
I mean, among other things, I don't think anybody on the call actually has the information you're looking for.
Okay.
Um, you know, I think if you contact HPC, the Historic Preservation Office.
Okay.
And they, the Historic Preservation Officer might be able to answer your question. Yeah, and just to follow up what David said, this really isn't within, this is not something the planning board is responsible for. It would be the township. And a, a, a good place to start is, uh, with Historic Preservation Officer, as well, as well as with Ryan.
That's fine.
I can
Mr. Jones, I, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Julie is the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission.
I can say hi. I could just say that, um, this is after, uh, years of the non-compliance, then there's
Oh, yeah.
There's, um, wait, so they're, they're gonna be paying money back to the town, so.
Okay, all right, that, that makes sense.
Yeah. So, so, yeah, that's part of this whole deal.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I, I know that not every question was answered, but, and I, um, I know hanging in there for this long is, um, was bound to be, uh, thank you for your patience.
Yeah, yeah, don't worries. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, um, let's see, board members, um, would someone like to make a motion on, uh, on this application for an extension? Mr. O, uh, O'Donnell?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to grant the hundred eighty day extension.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, okay.
Um, I, I saw Mr. Cohen's hand first, so, um, um, uh, Mr. Cohen seconds, okay, um, ugh, sorry, everybody. Carrie, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Badekheimer?
Yes.
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Wonderful. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Um, great. Any further business? Seeing none, Mr. Cohen?
Then we adjourn.
Yay. All second. All in favor? Carrie, it was your last meeting. I, I tip my hat to you for many, many years of service. I'm looking forward to your uh, party. I'll be there with bells on. Thanks a million. We're gonna bring you back and, um, and, uh, make you
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll see you, Carrie.
Okay, good night.
Good night. Good night, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night.